Big call for especially just sort of staff that's here. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys put in on a daily and nightly basis. We really appreciate it. Tim Millie is here. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And thank you guys for coming to. All right, let's go ahead and we will go right into our operations report. Ian Silva.
All right, I sit down?
Yes.
I'm sure we have questions and I have some of the software and the data pull up on my computer. So if you have questions, it'll be easier for me to dive in and pull those up if you answer your questions tonight. So awesome, thank you for having me here tonight. Hopefully you had a chance to go through the report I generated and was able to give some ideas out there and some thoughts for some good conversation tonight in regards to what it looks like for the next half a year. Here's for Twill County School District and our facilities. First off, try to put a report there together. You've noticed there's not a ton of like specific projects for every building. I have those here, so if you have specific questions about schools, please ask because I have them here. I didn't print them out or put them in the report because it would have been hundreds of pages worth of stuff. And I don't know if you guys wanted to go down here and look at every structural category or electrical or mechanical category, you know, item by item. So if you have specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those. But anyways, jumping into the report, kind of looking over the executive summary, just some of those highlights from that and jumping into some of the charts. You can see where we kind of sit as a school district with that first section of charts over like the tenure. You're going to see some large dollars in there, millions of dollars worth of needs. I think what you'll notice tonight as you look at those needs, I think it's a lot of what we reference as deferred maintenance over the years. And so it's upfront cost savings because the work just doesn't happen. So we choose not to do the work, we choose to push it down the road or whatever reason that is, and then we defer it. And that looks great because we didn't spend money to fix anything and it's like, oh, it helps the bottom line. But ultimately, that problem never goes away. So as time goes on, that problem either gets worse or adds more expensive, just with kind of how the world works and with inflation and the cost of construction, typically six to eight percent year to year on any given project. So if you don't do it this year, you can guarantee it's probably going to be in the six to eight percent range next year. One thing that we did see during COVID, some of those trades in some of those areas went up as much as forty percent. They have not come down. So you know, so all that deferred maintenance up to COVID took a forty percent increase and just has kind of held since then. And then year to year now, it was back down to about six to eight percent is what we're seeing. So as you kind of dive into that executive summary, some of the highlighted areas that we've, that I've just kind of highlighted this year, that deferred maintenance, the facility condition. So all this information was pulled from the master plan that we did with V C B O and partnered with them. There's also information in there pulled from R S means, which is a estimating software for a lot of contractors. Most people in the industry use that or something similar to estimate project cost. Also pull a lot of data from our security assessment that we partnered with back in 2020 with M H T N Architects and Les Nichols of areas where we need to improve as a school district. Not all those numbers are in there and we talked about this last time we presented. You guys challenged me with this. We are still vetting a lot of this out with the new software, getting it in there, making sure it's accurate. There's a lot of data in there. But as we went through this, I just want you guys to know, we did have licensed architect and engineers that went through and walked every square inch of our buildings, looked at it. And so as you see these numbers, these can be in as the ceiling tiles cracked all the way down to major mechanical issues like replacing a chiller or something large like that. So there's everything in between. So I kind of want to jump into that first chart, that chart one point one and kind of talk a little bit with that with you guys. Because you can see some, some large numbers in there on the elementary schools. Like at the top, you can see current needs for our buildings is, you know, a little over forty three million dollars is what you're seeing there. To compare that number, what we're comparing to, that would say bringing every one of our elementary schools up to a twenty wells. And the junior high would be bringing them up to Statsbury Junior High School, Desert Peak High School. And so we had those sitting there. So we told the architect and the engineers like, what would it take to bring every one of these buildings up and be equitable to these brand new schools? So those are where we're driving those costs to get them there. So some of those things are yes, they need to happen. Some other things are like, ah, do they or don't they? So we can ask those questions. But you can see that current forty three million dollars, talking about that deferred maintenance, as you look across that board from like twenty seven to twenty eight to twenty nine, you can see those, how much lower costs we're going to have. So what's that saying is useful life, for example, on a chiller is twenty years. So as you look across there, we know now in 2030, there's going to be a chiller at one of the schools that's going to be needed to replace. We know years in advance, we started creating this plan instead of just go tell it quits. That's kind of the deferred maintenance, right? We're going to defer it till we absolutely have to replace it. Where now we're trying to change that narrative into a proactive approach. So we're ahead of it, so we can budget for it and know that it's coming. But you can see that deferred maintenance up to this point in time when it's cost us of maybe not doing some work we should have done years ago. But you look down there, that forty three million, there's some large price tags. West Elementary, for example, twenty four, twenty five, almost twenty five million of that. Forty three million is just for West Elementary School. And we'll talk about that later because that comes into the fact of where does it cross the line? And we have that with our F C I, the Facility Condition Index of should we repair it or should we replace it? If you've read the report, you can kind of see what we're looking at, what, wouldn't that make sense? When we should invest money in it or shouldn't? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so when I was looking at, I noticed most of the current things are the same as the twenty twenty seven things. So are you saying that if the work occurs by twenty twenty seven, then this is what it will look like throughout the future?
Yeah, and everything that we don't do now, we'll just keep escalating and costing more.
So basically, it's like we, if we do it by twenty twenty seven, then we will drive these costs down. But if not, twenty twenty eight beyond does not look that way.
Exactly. So yeah, so what we're just showing now is so twenty eight, twenty nine, what you're seeing on there, that would just be new, new money added to whatever hasn't got done.
Whatever inflation would be for this company. And so also with the forty four million total, if you back out schools, that would be rebuilt or some of those lower priority things, the forty four million becomes less.
A lot less correct.
Ian, one other question, does this include any of the security studies?
Very minimal. That's why I wanted to show it separately, so.
I just wanted to make sure, was it overlap or if it was all?
It, it's very minimal, so what you would see on there is probably some fencing.
So would you guess ten percent?
Probably higher, actually. I probably pushing fifteen percent.
Okay, so that total would be, and I, I, we're not going to, you know, count it to the penny. Just a rough feel.
Yeah.
Probably fifteen percent of that forty four million probably is also counted in the security stuff that we're going to talk about later.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty minimal on there. And so yeah, there are some things that they went through there that just naturally become a security or safety issue, right? Because structurally, like so structural, so you start looking at structural. If you have structural issues like unreinforced masonry, there's some crossover there with the structural on the F C I and the safety and security because it's a safety issue having.
It felt like, and I did not have an opportunity to go back and compare school to school, but a lot of the security stuff was also these same schools. Sorry, the high dollar schools.
Yeah.
The high dollar schools you're seeing here were also on, the high dollar schools on.
Correct, because their age, right? They were built a long time ago and so they just have newer things that have come out and to be able to upgrade those and bring them up to a new standard like twenty wells or.
Or not.
Or not. And, and that's great. So you can see the elementary, you're going to see the same thing as you go down to chart. We'll go to the high schools. I thought that was a big one. You're looking at ninety million dollars there. We usually look at that, that's Grantsville High School has a lot of needs in there. That's replacing window over height, like those are large ticket items, larger schools, a lot more needs there. I did want to pull that to one of the highs, the twenty six million dollar on there. Majority of that money is not for the main building. It is for the industrial arts building. And so when you're looking at twenty six million problems, twenty six million dollars worth of things and concerns at Twill High School, ninety percent of that is at the I A building. And so they're looking at that, what it would cost to rebuild I A and that's your shops and your C T E over there. And Bob definitely could probably answer a lot more questions about that building than I am. We've been living there for several years. But so a big number of that, I just wanted you to know that there's a big number in there. And also another big number at Twill High School is driving that cost up is actually upgrading its efficiencies. And so one of the big ticket is, is actually lighting in the building, upgrading the lighting throughout the building and getting it into L E D, which then that'll have some awesome operational cost savings over the years. So that's several million dollars to be able to pull off a project like that where we would go and retrofit all of Twill High School out from traditional fluorescent lights into a, yeah, into a T led or an L E D light.
I mean, obviously, we can't afford to do all these, but if we did chunks of them, do we have the manpower to make these?
In-house, in-house manpower, I would say no. Most of this work is going to be a contracted outwork.
Oh, okay.
Pretty, pretty large, pretty large scale things. And so it'd be, as you know, starting to look at, the best route for us would be able to bring on an architect.
Okay.
Because a lot of these projects are not just electrician working on it. It's going to be two or three different trades and we'd.
Okay, so that is.
Bringing on, yeah, very large scale projects. So most of the stuff you're seeing in here, like the large ticket items are items that would have to be outsourced to.
So Ian, you mentioned bringing in an architect, but the reality is an architect is expensive. Would, would we be better opt, an architect adds a lot of money to it. And, and a lot of these things are pretty routine kind of things. I mean, we're not designing the school, right? I mean, yeah, there's two or three trades involved, but they're not like these, yeah, I hate Bill for being an exception, but it's not like these are, it's more of a project management role. And I guess my point being, could, could we actually save money by bringing an in-house resource to manage that versus outsourcing and letting an architect add another ten percent, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Those architectural fees.
Absolutely, I think that, I think that's a great way to look at it. Mike Garcia does all of this work. We did have a project manager hired. He's moved on to be our maintenance supervisor now. And so we did have that position that we currently don't. But yeah, those projects, handling all those projects, there's a majority of them, you're probably correct, that it just needs to be in-house. And so it's just about having the manpower to manage that much stuff and making sure the communication and we're staying on time because we don't want to miss deadlines because that adds cost and different things like that. But large, large scale, where the, I guess, I'm being an architect, like if we're going to be redoing major remodel of a building, right, adding some of these things I mentioned in here, those bigger scope projects.
But a lot of it is project management.
Correct.
And, and, and I guess, as I see these numbers, in my mind, it was put together by an architect engineer and I feel like that those kind of were kind of filled in implicitly, you know, but they're going to say, oh yeah, we need an architect for this project and for this.
Yeah.
And so.
So these costs don't, so these costs don't have any architectural fees in this. This is straight from R S means. This is taking a project and saying, okay, this project, square footage, and I can show you the data if you'd like to see it, but every one of these trades right now, current construction, so you know, electrical, if you're running electrical or dollar eighty three linear foot. And so we say, okay, we need eight hundred linear feet and then that's straight to the number. There is no additional cost added to this. So if, if you were to bring in architect or engineers or additional stuff, there's probably going to be additional costs that's not shown here.
So in either case, then what I'm hearing you say is that these costs would actually be higher. Whether we bring in-house the management or we outsource that, in either case, would be additional costs.
Potentially, yes. Depending on how much it is, if it's, if we're talking about recarpeting the building, probably not. If we're talking about upgrading the electrical power in there and we've got to bring an electrical company in there, there's going to be some markup potentially, yeah, to outsource it. So depending from project to project, yeah.
Keep talking, somebody else.
So we're session, you're good.
Yeah, let's have the conversation.
So, so my next, so my, my question is, you said this was to bring them all up, if you will, you know, the elementary schools to our newest elementary school, our junior high to this junior high.
Yeah.
But, but the reality is, we're, we're not, well, okay, now I'm one seventh. This is Scott's veyn now. But I don't see us with any desire to bring up Twill Junior High or frankly, let's Dougway High School, sorry, Grantsville High School to Desert Peak Standards. That, that's not, the, the reality is it's however many years old. And I, I don't think that's.
I think your report, your report addresses that in the next section two point O with the prioritization and then he's got red lines across.
Right, but, but these dollars are representative of bringing everything to like, you know, A plus standards.
It's not like we can back a lot of the costs out. So he's giving you like pie in the sky.
Well, and that's where I'm going, where I'm trying to get to. My question what is, recognizing that, what, what are the costs to bring them up to safe operational standards that aren't necessarily those brand new school standards, right?
Yeah, so, so yeah, so and section two point O is the billing priority cost report. So those large numbers in that next section, as you go through there, we break them down through five priorities. Where priority one's like immediate, they need to happen because they are probably a safety, security or air conditioning, heating, it's something that's going to impact kids being able to come to school them off. Those are needs that need to be addressed right now. And then as you move down from two, three, four and five priorities, the less of the priority, the more, the priority. Fives are more cosmetics, four cosmetics.
Help, I guess collectively understand, what is a priority one to a two? Is one we just can't do without, is a two we can do without, but we have to hold our nose?
Yes, two, two is, we've had the conversation, the duct tape, we can go in there and we can do a lot with it to keep it running. It's just playing with, give, you know, borrow time, I guess. Where one is like, it's just, it's done, like we've done everything we possibly can.
At some point, the light bulb is burned out, you have to replace it.
We need to do, that's where one, where two is, it's still functioning, but we know it's, it's pretty close to being obsolete or it needs to be replaced. For example, Grantsville Elementary School, priority two at Grantsville Elementary School. So there's a lighting system in that building that's operated off of two switches and off of software to be able to program when the lights come on and the lights come off. One of those switches has gone bad and the software now is not compatible, so we can't access it. So we have zero control over the lights of the building. So they're just on the old schedule, they come on and they come off. If they don't come on, we have to go in the breaker and we have to turn them all on manually. So that's kind of moving from a one to a two, right? It's like we live by it, but we know it needs to be.
But using that example, okay? And it's nice if the lights come on automatically, great. But the reality is, I'm not opposed to paying somebody to flip the breaker to turn on the lights for three hundred seventeen thousand dollars. And they can do that for a very long time for three hundred thousand dollars, right? We, we have somebody do it full time for many years before, if their whole job is to flip the switch before we get to three hundred thousand. So I, if, if that's the example priority two, I'm not worried about two and higher because a, a switch and, and software and timing, so what? Especially right now with our current economic situation.
So page eight, I feel like is really helpful. I don't know, Ian, if you want to address that more, that might help this conversation because, yeah.
Yeah.
Because to me, it seems like we're playing with one and two seem more significant because I think that leads to more costs down the road.
Well, but it doesn't, if the example is the timer on the light switch.
Well, I, I disagree because I don't want employees having their fingers in a breaker box every day. So that's multimillion dollar liability when we electrocute somebody. So I think that's a problem.
Is it in the breaker box?
Yes. It's not a light switch, it's, you have to go.
Right, you have to flip a breaker.
Get in the breaker box every day.
But you don't remove the panel.
It's still employees in breaker boxes every day. I just, I don't think that's a practice that I would feel is safe or would want to do.
I mean, that's one example that he gets.
Right, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to give real life examples of what.
And I can, I can get in there, we can get into, to code, code stuff. We can talk about A D A needs. There's a lot of A D A that's put in here that's not, we're not A D A compliant in some places where we don't have enough parking stalls or the grids aren't right or we don't have ramps or we don't have access for A D As, issues that are addressed in this report too. I think those are priority ones from priority twos. Priority ones, like yeah, are we not there, but can we have something? Yeah, there's lots of options for somebody to go and access the building somewhere else. But is that fair to that person to have to drive and park in the front every day when their class is in the back and the only reason they can't get in the back is because the grade's not right or something, or there's not A D A parking there?
Do we make the A D A codes?
From nineteen sixty maybe, but not to any twenty five. And they don't really care about that, you know, it's where we're at, trying to take care of students or patrons. And so there's things like that in there too, Scott, that come, come around. Other, other priorities would be, you, you can look at safety and security. All of our schools right now have door locks. That meets the intent, but they've asked us to go above and beyond of them keeping their doors locked every day, of having it be able to say locked or unlocked and stuff like that. So those are additional money on there that's coming from the state that's telling us like, hey, you're good till twenty thirty. Bob can speak more to that somewhere till after twenty forty. And so those are the things right now, like we have what we need in place, but it's not necessarily where we want to be. And so those are some of those things where that priority one, like, yeah, would it be great to if we had it done now? Yeah, but it's not necessarily something that needs to be done, like a chiller, for example, like Twill High's chiller. You know, we're, we're looking at that right now and I don't know if it has much longer to, so that's a priority one in my opinion because we want to add air conditioning. Priority two at Twill High School would be more of, not to get too far in the weeds, there's a lot of requests from the school that they think is a priority number one or from citizens that think are priority ones. Have the conversations around turf fields, we've had conversations around teen centers. And so those are all things in there that have that aspect on there too of what does that make out of the priority? Because some things are tangible and some things are not, like a teen center. Yeah, is a priority one of making the billing function, but it may be a priority one for the need of the school. If that makes sense. And so that's kind of hard sometimes to, to pinpoint where all those are. But the way we're looking at it is literally is, is coming down that like, if priority one doesn't happen, then we're not having kids at school. If priority two doesn't happen, we're going to have to put a lot of work and we're going to have to monitor it and make sure, you know, we're down there resetting stuff or doing things. Priority three less, priority four less.
I just understand where I'm coming from first of all. I guess it's just the reality of our, while we, while we're, while we've covered the gaps, there's significant dollars here that we don't have money for. I mean, the, the hard reality is, right?
Absolutely.
We, we don't have money for the state mandate and stuff, let alone all this other, right?
Yeah.
And, and we're in that situation now and, and we're not going to go back to taxpayers and ask for another tax increase, right? That, that's off the table. So, so the reason I'm pushing is just, I, so I understand. And, and by the way, I'm probably the king of Taiwan. So, so I, you know, you, and that's not a news flash, these guys all know that, you've been around enough meetings to know that, right? But, but I think it's really important that we understand or, or community understands what, what, where we're at on some of these projects. And, and sometimes it may not be ideal. I guess I've worked with enough contractors and architects in my work that I get a little suspect sometimes of what their priorities are and what realistic workaround is.
Sure.
And that's why I'm pushing a little bit, but I, I agree with what you're saying.
It's completely fair and, and that's where we've looked at this too. And that's why it's taken as long as I have, like in the kind of start of the meeting, like we're still vetting all those things out too, is going through all those items and saying, okay, what is this or what isn't? Because also there's different tiers of things, right? There's always, you can tier up from where you're going from of quality or how fancy or how not fancy.
My priority was going to be different than, and every one of us have a different priority. So just because I don't think it's priority one, doesn't mean it's not.
Yeah.
But the reality is, it's kind of, we have the pies this way.
Yeah.
And, and that's where it comes down to. We have this much money, what do we do with it?
Yeah, just one, one thing with Scott, I, I agree one hundred percent with you that like putting this report together is very difficult, knowing that there's needs out there and there's only so much you can go around to get it. And so us, I, I, I hear what you're saying because I take a lot of responsibility on myself for looking at that and saying, okay, what is, what can we do and what can we do and what are the priorities? And that's been hard because I did talk about it in here because years past with capital outlay, it was really like, everybody gets something. And that was really difficult for me to come in that situation because we get all these requests and there'd be requests that needed to be done or there's requests that didn't really need to be done, in my opinion, of the operation of the school. But the direction was given in years past was we're going to be fair and every school gets something.
Everybody gets something.
And so we had a lot of little wants and there was a lot of needs that didn't get done because we didn't want. And so we take a lot of responsibility on with trying to change this. We've been doing better, but I, I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying of like trying to say, okay, what is a want and what's a real need and really investing into the needs, making sure that's, because these, these are large numbers. And I know it's something that if you look at it, it's like, oh man, that's, that's crazy. And, and hearing and knowing where we're, we're sitting as a school district, but letting you know, we, we do take it serious and we are vetting it out and saying, oh yeah, that's a really nice thing, but this is the need versus the want, I guess. Or like you said, looking at it, some of those things can easily be addressed by having an individual do it instead of spending a lot of money on having it automated.
But that individual costs them too.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not sure if this was Scott was going with this, but number one is for every single expenditure, right? Having someone like a Scott Ryan there to say, hey, wait a minute, you know, how can we can't just have people stick their fingers in the box and flip the switch? I'm being a little bit silly with saying that. But the point is just scrutinizing every single thing, right? Of course, that's the message we're trying to say here, I think. The other is, we, we have to also make sure that this gets communicated to color that, hey, we could do this, this, but look what we did here. We did this instead, we did this instead. So that whenever someone comes and says, hey, you're just spending way too much money, we need to be able to say, okay, let's look at the facts here, let's look at the list. Here's what we've actually saved money over time. So I think it's great to save money, but we have to make sure we're capturing those savings. I think that is happening, but I'd sure like to see that even hyper extended in terms of what are we capturing? Can we get a good list of that? That would be my request tonight is to make sure that we're very, very careful, we scrutinize everything and that we also are capturing those savings, putting it in a standard report. I don't know if that happens monthly or quarterly or annually where the savings are actually happening so we can better express that, of course, to our public. That's very important.
Yeah, love it. You're both saying really good things. I just want, when we talk about who has priorities and things like that, maybe we need to kind of make sure we're using the same language when we talk about priorities because it might be like, oh, well, you know, I wish the stairs were fixed at Twill Junior High. I'm totally making this up. But then somebody else is like, well, I want a turf field. And that's a difference of like nebulous priorities. But I feel like Ian has defined this and we can define it further. And I think that's good for Scott to be questioning what the things would be, like you said, they need to question. But if we're all using the same language, a priority one really should be pretty impartial that if we're looking at things like what it feels like, and you can tell me if I'm wrong because I'm, I'm trying to feel out what you put here, which I think is great, that you're saying priority one, it's going to cost us a lot of money or lives or livelihoods or lawsuits. And that's pretty impartial that we say priority one. I'm not going to argue with Melissa about who's our priority because we're going to say, these are crucial things. And is that what you're trying to get at?
Yeah, yeah, one hundred, one hundred percent. It's just stuff that you go through there. It's the stuff we, we get beat up with a lot and question on a lot, like why we do this or why we don't do that. And, you know, right now it's great because it's been in the seventies. So the complaints for heat has gone way down. And so it's time for the heaters to turn back on. But those, those, that, that equipment, if you talk, if you go out and talk to people in the industry, that equipment has useful life. We've never taken that into consideration. We literally buy it, we put it in the building and we run it into the ground. We never look at it, like we, we maintain it and you do the P M and stuff on there. But it just gets to a point where that, that piece of equipment no longer supports the parts. You can't find the equipment for it and the programming for it. Those things just get to the point where they just, they're not longer, you know, it's like a computer. Try to go and have the same computer that you've, you know, thinking back to the first computer you ever got and think it was sitting in front of you tonight and see how efficient that was. That's kind of the approach we've taken on some of our buildings. And you think about it and I think about it all the time, like I think of Willow Elementary, I remember it being built. And I saw in my mind, I still think I'm a young guy and I'm like, that's a young school. And then now I'm like, oh my gosh, it's over twenty years old. But now, you know, we're starting to see problems with the mechanical units and some of those things that have that twenty to twenty five year root school life. And I'm like, why is it not working? And it's like, oh, really, it's because it's done its job and it's done its job great. It's just for our time now to look to replace it. And that's those priority ones is that because I don't think we're going to be able to have school if we don't have air conditioning anymore. And in years past, we built schools without air conditioning because it wasn't a priority. And so those priorities change with time. But it comes down to what you're saying is like, can our kids come and be safe at school? But it comes down to what you're saying is like, can our kids come and be safe at school? And if that and if that items is if without that item and we say no, then that's a priority one, like if they cannot come. As a school district, we can't feel like we can support our students in our building and feel like they're going to be safe. And be able to receive a, you know, the education we want them to receive, then that's that priority one. And as you ask that question, every one of those things like. Hey, if we don't do this, are their kids gonna be safe at school? Are they gonna be able to come to school? Are they gonna have an adequate learning experience in an environment that they can learn in? If the question is yes, then that moves that down that priority line and it says, okay, that's someone, that's a nice thing, that's the want, right? It's the new carpet, the new paint on the wall, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of cosmetic things land into those things down there that are super nice. It would make that building more adequate. And I think that answers Scott's question with architects, right? They come in there and they want the the pearl, you know, they want it to look nice. And so there are a lot of items like that. They they like that, they look at that and you see that. And I think if you went and asked a lot of our teachers, that yes, there's a lot of them that would love the carpet and a new paint job. And maybe some ceiling tiles replaced and stuff like that. But is that keeping our kids from coming to school and learning that? Uh it kind of pushes down the down the list, right? And so.
I so I think that what we're talking about is if we agree. Uh now we know what priority one is, we can use same language. It's not really up to much interpretation. It's like the engineer assessment and all that kind of thing. So for instance, you look at elementary school priority one. At five point five whatever million dollars, I put it in the calculator. Back out, you have a red line very conveniently across west, because we know that that's past its useful life. So you back that out and we're down to uh seven sixty-eight for priority one. But then you have the yellow line and you mentioned later in your presentation, Stansbury Park Elementary School is a conversation to be had. So if you decide we're gonna stick with it, it will take three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to make priority ones great. If you decide we're not sticking with it, then you back that out too. He's made it so easy for us. Um, so now you're saying, okay, priority ones, four twenty-five, we're under half a million dollars. So I think if you start to look at it in the chunks like that, it's not this. Conversation.
Yeah, that's what, those were kind of the intent, trying to show you just like, hey, this is where it's at and then kind of going down and breaking that down. I think something that's it's, I think you should mention with the Stansbury Park and some of those schools, they're they're West Elementary. That was ten years ago, West Elementary School and so. I don't necessarily wanna get back into playing that game either. And that's kind of the importance of trying to point that out is is that we did defer maintenance with West, right? We got told, hey, we're going to replace it or we're going to, you know, it's coming. And so my teams all look at that as like, well, we'll just keep deferring it, kicking that can down the road, because. We don't wanna invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in that building, because it's getting replaced. Stansbury Park Elementary School is on that list. There's a couple of them that are seeing in that yellow. They really are west of ten years ago. And so it's really time for us to decide. What's the plan there? Is it, are we going to invest in them and keep them up? Or we, I don't wanna do deferred maintenance again. I don't wanna have the same conversation ten years from now of why we didn't do something.
Cause I think as as on a word, you open that can of words, I need personally and. I I don't mind having that conversation, but I think sometimes it's like, well. We would need options and suggestions on what we were to do. It stands very word. If we need to close that to make plans down the road. So.
Absolutely.
I think that's partially what may have happened back with West, because I was just on the board almost eight years ago. And it was just the same thing, but then there was no really option.
Or plan or anything.
No plan. And so then we could say, well, the board didn't want to ever close it because of the, well, no one wants to ever close a school. That always hits the news. That's the first thing in community. And and when we even had that conversation. Like a two-minute conversation, what, two years ago? It brings up emotions, but if there's a plan. It sure at least helps the emotions of that. So that's something probably we as a district can start to look at, you know, like.
Yeah.
What is the plan? Like, sh- sure, let's make sure these kids are safe and close Stansbury Elementary, but. If we don't have a plan to rebuild it, do we have a plan of where to put kids? Cause maybe we can't re, I mean, I'm.
Or the flip side of the plan is. If we really do need four million dollars, a priority one, no, whoops, sorry, that was on. If we need five point five million dollars of just the elementary school.
We don't need more than seven whatever.
Well, no, just for Stansbury Elementary. Okay, so you have to back.
Priority one elementary.
Seven sixty-eight.
But my, where I was going was just saying, okay, so where are you gonna get five million dollars from? It's not from the taxpayer. And it's not from a bond, so let's talk about where that money, what what is your proposal for where does five million dollars come from? I mean, are, if if does it forego, we're not gonna get buses, you mentioned, which we spent buses, so no new buses for two years. Um does that mean, does it doesn't get computers and that, does that mean? Because it's back to the analogy of pi. So therefore, as a district, and it's not on you, please don't take any, because I.
I appreciate the conversation.
But as a district, we think it's critical enough that we have air conditioning at, that we're willing to give up.
The.
This.
And and I I think you're you're, you know, this is what I put, like I said, it's difficult to put this report together, because I do see these dollar amounts. I know where we are. And that's the question is like, how do I, how do we figure out, how do we manage this and how do we do those things? And that's why I love the conversation around it, because that's why I wanted to bring it to you guys, so you guys are aware and understand that. Cause I don't want you to be in the dark and then all of a sudden be like, well, if we knew this, why then why did we buy a million dollars with the buses where we could have got through it for a year?
Because at some point we have to see decisions.
Yeah, absolutely.
It is, the reality is it's. Priority for all still perfect.
Yeah, one hundred percent.
You know, we'll do textbooks, right, for two years. I mean, that's, is it more important for that than?
Well, and at what point do you, for some of these, go into our reserves? Cause if we go into the reserves, can we bring some of this stuff up and? Yeah, like, kind of just make it equal and then we don't have all these big things come and so. That's probably where luck comes in. What what's our threshold of bringing down our reserves? Can we go into our reserves that, you know?
And see, to me, the biggest point is that we want our taxpayers to pay the least amount of money possible.
Right.
Not the amount that makes me look good today. We want them to spend the least amount of money possible. We want to be as efficient as possible with the tax dollars. So maybe if I say, oh, I didn't spend any money today, or this month, I spent no money on my car. But I didn't do my oil change and then my engine cost us. So great, you did a really good job this month, but. Now you're gonna have, you know, more things to pay. So I think that that needs to be forefront of the conversation that.
Yeah, and that's right, into the deferred maintenance. That's exactly what you're talking about.
How much do we have in our reserves?
So that, like, all right, even though we use reserve, we've made it so you pay the least amount of money in the future.
In the future, that's exactly.
Yeah, I I can show you stuff back when we were, when we started to bond for schools and and looking in there, like, we put charts together, like. If you bond and you build the school in this year versus this year versus this year. Historically, like I said, it's been six to eight percent is what you could bank on. And the COVID put, you know, upwards to forty percent out there in a kind of plateau, but we're still seeing six to eight percent. So any project you're seeing on here, so if it was, you know, whatever that project is, names. And if you, if we did it this year, it's gonna cost this much. If we did it next year. You can easily guarantee to add eight percent to that and you can do it from year to year to year out there, so. Uh depending on how long you get to it, it's going to add six to eight percent guaranteed to project to, that's replacing equipment, that's doing anything. That's just, that's kind of where the construction and maintenance industry has been for a long, long time. And so like I said, you take out the weird COVID years, but everything else is pretty pretty standard. As you go back in historical, look at costs, it's. It's right in that ballpark of what you can guarantee. If you if you wait to do it next year, it's gonna be eight percent or more on the high end potentially. So many if you add tariffs in there and all the other fun stuff that we're doing with these days, it it makes it, I'm trying to hit a moving target some days, it feels like, but. Um, I think one of the things, yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just, just as curiosity sake, I haven't seen it happen, but I'm curious, is there ever a point where um the state or. Building inspection or whatever says, um you can't have kids in this building and it's not our decision?
Yeah, yeah, we've had that conversation. With the state fire and marshal about life safety devices. So those are, those are, you wanna start talking, those are typically ones we see. Uh those conversations based around, so that's life safety, so that's fire alarm. Um all of those fun devices and things like that, where you come in there and it's deemed that it's not safe to have occupants in there. Then they will pull our occupancy um from the state and say, until you get these things fixed, you can't have people in the building. So yeah, there's there's a potential there. I I don't think we're even close to any of that. We've had some, we've had some things thrown out there, like, and and it. It it shutting the buildings down, it's been more of an um. How do I say, an operational thing on our end, where we've blocked es- exits, where that can be easily resolved, right? Go move all the furniture out from the doors. Or, you know, stuff like that, it's just things that we've done that are really easily fixed. Um, so that's where we've run into them, but in big scheme of things. Um, life safety, I think we sit really well with our buildings and so I'm not necessarily concerned about that, but yeah.
We're not approaching that.
It could be a, it could be an item, though, like it's, it could, that could happen. But I don't think we're close to that at all with. Reviewing now with the state fire marshal of the health department and stuff like that.
So Ian, and and maybe I'm opening up a whole different conversation than you want to talk about. But you and I had a discussion about uh preventing maintenance.
Yes.
Could you explain how that plays in and and could benefit us in some of that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great conversation. And so first off, just thank you for everybody for allowing us to. Go down a new direction this year that I'm super excited about. Um, we've partnered with a company. Um, they're gonna start out, they're doing three schools with us, it's in the report, so it's Settlement Canyon, Stansbury High and Twill High School. Uh where we have a um a licensed journeyman at HVAC tech. Uh from a company coming out and PMing those schools every month. And so they've got a whole list of PM that they're going through. Our rooftop units, our mechanical units, chillers, boilers, they're they're going through the whole thing. Uh, that's super exciting. We've had a real struggle of uh being able to hire a a journeyman HVAC tech. Mainly it's shop to be able to perform a lot of that stuff. Uh, so that's kind of exciting to have that person. Another reason that is exciting is a lot of these things haven't been getting done. So then you see premature failures, which I hate to see, because that's money to taxpayers that shouldn't have happened. It's just. Simple greasing a motor, changing a bell, changing a filter. Uh, we've noticed we haven't done a really great job of that. Um, I'll use the Twill High example, for example, one of the recent conversations Bob and I had. We we literally just had a new roof put on that, on that building recently from damage that was under warranty. So it was all warranted out from a hailstorm we had about two, three years ago. So the roof got replaced on there and so I get a call and I was like, where all these roof leaks come from? I'm like, well, that's weird, we haven't had any rain. Uh, the problem was that some some preventative maintenance work hadn't been done and so our systems were creating condensation. Instead of being able to vent out, and so it was creating pools of water in these areas, which then it was running back down and created some of those roof leaks. And so there are our own leaks that we had created inside the building and not from mother nature. So like that stuff costs money, because now we've gotta go replace some things. There's some other things like that, but. Uh preventative maintenance, this equipment, instead of uh Stansbury High School, we'll talk about that one, um we've replaced the chillers at Stansbury High School. Uh we replaced them about four years ago now, three, four years ago. Uh, the reason why they got replaced was poor preventative maintenance. And so those units failed prematurely, because they weren't maintained properly. We didn't put them enough time and effort into them and so they fell. Then that cost us to to have to change them out. And so doing preventative maintenance extends that useful life on those machines. It's just like the example Emily did uh on her car, right? You don't change your oil in your car, it's probably not gonna last as long as you want it to do. If you let the oil run out of it, right, you're gonna burn up the engine, seize up the engine and then that, your engine's done. So that's that same idea, just, you know, that's regular scheduled stuff. And so being able to partner with a company that can provide us a a journeyman. Uh tech that we haven't been able to hire or afford, uh we can hire them and contract them on, so they're gonna be doing that. And hopefully, if that works the way we see it, and it's gonna be the, you know, coming back to the cost savings, right, of making equipment last longer. Um, that that's gonna be a good thing. And so that's what we're anticipating with this. And so far, so good, it's been really good. Uh the other thing that helps with this is that that person being a trained tech, they're gonna have their eyes on that equipment. Lot more frequently than we were able to provide with the staff we had. And so literally, you know, it's out of sight, out of mind, if it if it was working, it was working. As soon as it didn't work, we'd get the call, right? Like, hey, it's hot in here, it's cold in here. Then we'd go over there and see the belts are all broken or something had happened to the machine. So we just didn't have the manpower to keep eyes on it constantly. Where at this tech, he'll be able to see those, he'll be able to diagnose things early on. If some bearings are wearing out, he'll let us know and so we'll replace the bearings instead of having a complete. Failure on it, because the bearings wear out, break some parts and it costs us a lot more money. And so I think there's gonna be a lot of cost savings. I think our buildings are gonna be way more efficient. Because of this service and be able to really focus on the preventative maintenance instead of just back to the deferred, right? Or or out of sight, out of mind, if we aren't getting phone calls, it's working, right? So.
So now I'm gonna ask you an opinion question, okay? As as you explained that to me. I, as I, as I was thinking about it, I know you want to start with just a few schools to see how it's going to work. But in the long run, if it, you know, if it's going to save us money if we put more schools on it.
Correct.
Why, why wouldn't we do that?
Um, I don't know, it's a choosing not to do, it's back to Scott's comments.
It it's about dollars.
About the financial piece, but I I do think there's a lot of value in there. Um, one thing I've already noticed right now, just in the short time we've done it. Um, our amount of work orders have declined, because my texts that are in-house texts are able to focus on other needs instead of those needs. And so it's put a lot more time back to our in-house people. They go and put out the all the little tiny fires and all the other things. And so. There's a lot of benefit from it. And so in my opinion, I I would love to be able to afford to have that service at every one of our buildings. Specifically, Stansbury Junior High and Desert Peak that just opened, I love just the. One hundred percent P that, PM them from the very get-go and not let them start to deteriorate, just stay.
I guess the only reason I suggest that is, yes, I understand the budget and I understand the money situation. But I think in the long run, you get closer to that break-even point, even by putting all the schools on there, just in the savings. Of possible breakdowns and high-dollar equipment that you've got to replace.
Correct, yeah.
I I mean, I I I haven't analyzed that or anything else, but just to feel, knowing what equipment costs and things like that. I think you would get pretty close to a break-even point if you take into consideration, you're gonna have to replace a chiller, because it wasn't taken care of or things like that.
Yeah, yeah, those.
That would require a budget change for this year, correct? If we all of a sudden wanted to put all twenty-six schools on that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, it it's.
And I don't know what the dollar figures.
It's probably, it's probably, to add the rest of schools, we're probably looking for year to year, it would probably be between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars to. Add all the schools onto a PM schedule with that company.
So how were the three schools selected?
That's a great question. So Twill High and Stansbury High are are at the time our largest schools and they take. They take way more time from our um maintenance staff than any other schools. Um Settlement Canyon was picked up, because we wanted to do that one for a couple of different reasons. It's a footprint school. Um, it's it's close for the tech with Twill High School to jump in there. And then we had, we were, we're kind of seeing. Some problems potentially come up in there that we wanted to get ahead of. If that makes sense, we didn't like, oh, we could do, we could have done Willow, we could have done Grant's Elementary, could have done all those other ones. The Settlement Canyon felt like it was in a good place and we wanted to keep it in a good place. And it being a footprint school, we could get the cost there. Um, that tech can easily service Twill High and Settlement Canyon at the same time. And now that we know what the cost is for Settlement Canyon, we know what it'll take. And um most of those footprint have the same type of equipment in them. And so it's just like, well, if you can get on there and this works good, and it was back to the original comment is, we weren't gonna do all the schools. And so which schools would be a good test school, which ones made a lot of sense? And then Stansbury High and Twill High took a ton of our maintenance guys' time. So I was like, what can we do to give some time back to them to go work on other projects and other work orders? And so those two big schools were picked because of that and then the little school was picked, because it's running well. And we wanted to see if we like, just wanted to maintain it to continue to run well.
And and that's the approach I like is, let's test it, right? Let's pilot it. Let's get the numbers back and really see what the savings are and maybe we have that already. And then we can expand, right? I'm a little cautious or a little concerned about, let's get them all on there right away. Let's first understand what we have. Let's be as efficient with those as we can and then we can start duplicating.
Yeah, and that and that was where we're at. Um, one good thing with the contract is it's a state account. So they've gone through and been awarded through the state procurement office, so they have a state contract. And so we're not signing three, four, five-year contracts, like we can start it and stop it whenever, it's a month to month. And so. That that makes it nice too. So all the, all the money on there has all been vetted out through uh the state of Utah, and so we're just using that state contract for the service. So that makes it nice, we're not signing something that's, that we're locked in for three years or four years or five years with these people. Like, I could literally call tomorrow and say, you know, this really wasn't working out great, thank you, but no thank you, and be done with the contract too. Which I really like that about that, because I didn't wanna lock into something that I was not gonna be happy with or even get the bang for our buck that we expected for multiple-year contracts.
I wanna bring back just one more follow-up question. On the building priority on page ten on the high schools.
Yes.
The numbers aren't adding up to the grand totals by school. I'm spitballing, I'm doing the rough math, not the. But fairly significant differences. Is there a priority six that's not being shown to yet like Grantsville thirty-four million, for instance?
Yeah, so what you're seeing there is um across the priorities, so I think I can pull it open.
When I act, when I go across five totals, it doesn't compare we're close to.
Cross there, yeah.
Like things to make it perfect, like Desert Peak didn't get any of the priority.
That's what I'm asking, because if I add up one through five, we're not even close to the grand total. So I'm just understanding why.
Yeah, I'm I'm pulling that open.
And I was doing roundly adding, but it was still pretty significant.
So what you're looking at is on Grantsville, the total total that you're seeing there, I just pulled it open, so. Those buildings are are broken down into certain things. And so as I highlighted and clicked buttons to add it in there. So like at Grantsville High School, what you're not seeing, you're not seeing a lot of the site. Um so the priorities one through five are the building itself. And then there's a lot more money attached to that. It's not adding up to the grand total.
Cause I did. Better probably not get that in, because the grand total on Grantsville is roughly.
Yeah, so so I'm looking right now on on the civil, like going across though, that's parking lots, that's the football stadium um upgrades. I just, I didn't select, I didn't select it on there. They could be priorities, but this is focusing really on the building itself and not outside of.
Cause you're just the rough math, it's Grantsville's about twenty-five billion, priorities one through five, and the total's showing thirty.
Yeah, so like right, so like right now, I'm looking at, so so right now, I'm looking at civil, so it's asphalt paving. So I'll go, I'll go through the things that's not showing on like, so the one through five and to get to thirty-four, this is what it's not showing. So it's. It's uh parking lots, parent drop-off lane, the bus lane, redoing the bus lane. Uh it's fire lanes, curb and gutter, sidewalks, concrete paving, stairs and ramps, stor- uh storm drains, manhole covers. Cleanout covers, water meters, um ball on there. Uh that water meter, what that would be is Grantsville. Uh playing fields right now only run off of secondary irrigation water. At Grantsville, we don't have the ability to cross over to use culinary water. So that's in there, which like I said, it's, I didn't select all this stuff on there. Greases, interceptors. Uh gas meters, retention ponds, fire hydrants. Um accessible routes, parking capacity and distribution. So you look at the parking lot in there, you know, there's a six million dollar. Miss that's not in here, I'm adding, I'm growing the parking lot. Yeah, where do you not, where do you put six million dollar new parking lot at Grantsville High School?
Which my daughter tripped on Friday night, it was a loud impression.
And so 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 changing all of that stuff. And so those are just boxes I didn't select in there. And so what you're seeing on total would be taken care of from corner to corner, the site to site. Uh but the priorities in there are building themselves.
Thank you.
Could you throw them into a priority six, just so it adds up?
Yeah, we could definitely do that.
Is that, would it be a priority six, is why they're not in one?
Yeah, I can, I can definitely come in here and just click on all the boxes.
Cause it looks worse than it was.
Exactly.
I mean, if you just took the, or the flip side of that is just total one through five, it is.
Yeah.
Right.
Or you could just do.
That would probably be reasonable. Cause six is.
Yeah.
Let's not pull this, six is not happening.
So yeah, so and 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 part of, part of that landscape, like I can, like there's, you know, just so you guys all know, so it's general landscape, it's irrigation systems. It's um track, um softball field, baseball field's not available in here because there's not one at Grantsville High School. Um but it's all that stuff, uh playgrounds, it's everything, it's with the civil and site. It's everything outside of the building. Is that a, so what if you're doing the math on there, I just didn't, I, it's my bad.
No, 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 and that's why I was just like. Thinking about these numbers and I started adding a bunch of going, I can't get to thirty-five, I'm more like.
It's a, um when we're looking at like backing out certain ones, we know the red are the ones that are past their useful life. So we're not gonna, yeah. So the yellow ones, it makes sense because you mentioned the conversation about not making Stansbury Park Elementary. What happened to West, but Twill High School is also on the yellow and then Grantsville Junior, we'll ask you. Um one at a time, but Twill High School, I've only seen in all the reports that it's recommended that the IA building be rebuilt.
That's the piece.
The, what, one point six million is way less, it's twenty-four million for IA building. So what's this one point six priority one for Twill High?
Uh so I know for a fact seven hundred and, I got the quote, it's like seven hundred and two thousand dollars a brand-new chiller.
Okay, so don't back out the Twill High one? So I was just wondering if all the yellow ones could be backed out, like. So no, that's definitely no.
So Twill, Twill High, you see, like if you, you can do the same thing, we can do the math um that. Scott just did, that if you look across there, it's not gonna add up with the priorities because. The twenty-four million or whatever, like you can look on there, there's some of those, so those priorities are coming up. A lot of that has to do with the main building. But most of that number is the IA building.
So I was just wondering, just when I'm thinking about, can I back that number out of my mental total or not?
Yeah.
We're like, no, not.
And yeah, and I could run those large reports for every school if you want to see them individually.
Yeah, and it's fine.
One point six in there, I know uh two pieces of that one. I think it's a little over seven hundred thousand dollars is for the chiller. And I can actually pull it open too, that's why I sat down so I can.
That's fine. And I had a similar question with Grantsville High, like can we mentally back that out because this is what it takes to. If we're keeping the site, so we still have to have that conversation, are we keeping the site or not? Or is this six point eight million, like you cannot have kids in Grantsville High School at all if you don't do this, like?
So so Twill High School right now on those priority ones actually required. Um so one of the big ones on there right here I'm looking at is. Um money that we're carrying in that um right now priority one is the secure front entrance. Um we have that in there too. So the two pieces on there that are really driving that large number for Twill High School is the main building and it's the secure front entrance festival. That we've talked about and have had designed and ready to go. And then the other pieces, those are the two big tickets and that one point six is that and new chiller.
And then Grantsville, the six point eight, is that like a crucial to the safety of the kids or is that something that could be backed out, like the Stansbury Elementary?
Yeah, let me click on it, I'll, I'll show you right. Let me click on the main building at Grantsville High School.
Yeah.
So yeah, we can look at these items, so. Um Grantsville High School, um four point six million dollars at Grantsville High School is electrical.
Oh, electrical.
Um just getting to the point where it's just a nineteen eighty-five building and it's just having problems um. DJ could talk about this with his team, he can help me out, sort this with the. Uh tons of problems with being able to have enough power in the rooms to operate all of our new technology and running the school what it is. And so there's a lot of stuff. It needs to be drawn into those classrooms for Chromebooks, um all the tech, all the different stuff that's happening. Uh electrical also is a fire panel, uh fire alarm systems are in there, so that's part of that. And so that does need to be upgraded. Uh we've done a lot of work this year, so that's, that's a big piece of it. Uh other piece to that is the interior lighting in the building. Um just not having adequate lighting in there. And so that's one of those things we can talk about, like, are we good with it or not good with it? Um so yeah, part of that right there, two point fire is the fires protection. And so. Uh if you, if you've been on the board for several years now, uh you know, we replaced all the fire sprinkling system at Grantsville Junior High School. Uh that's probably six, seven years ago now, probably in there. So we had to go in there, entirely, entirely selling out of it and put in there. Those, those have useful life spans too. And so uh two point four million of that is at Grantsville High School adding, uh replacing those fire sprinkler heads because they're just at the point of. Getting to the point like, if that went off, are they going to work or not work? And so that's starting to get into those questions of the life safety. And so part of that number is that.
So even if we chose the option, not saying we are, just even if we chose the option that was discussed about. Making Grantsville High and Junior High and building a new high school, these things still need to happen.
One hundred percent. And that, and that's a great question around it because I've had this conversation about moving the junior high, moving it to your high at Grantsville High School. It's still, it's still, it's still a building that was built, well, there's like six pieces at Grantsville High School, right? There's a, there's a nineteen eighty-five addition, there's a two thousand. One, two thousand two edition or two thousand three in that era. There's a two thousand sixteen, seventeen with the new weight room. So there's a couple of different pieces to that. Uh building, the old gym is the oldest and that's from like the nineteen sixties. That's like the original, like that's the last piece originals, the small gym, old gym. Uh girls' gym, whatever area you come from, what you call that gym at Grantsville, but uh that's there. And then there's a lot from when the building got built, rebuilt in nineteen eighty-five. And then there's been pieces added to that. You're still going to invest millions of dollars in there to get your bang for your buck and where a brand-new junior high is sixty million dollars. Where now you start weighing your options. So where do you want to invest your money?
Just, I'm thinking about, you, you mentioned power for, and you, you know, DJ, you said, you know, the power, but. That's a chunk of money, but I'm, I'm thinking about Twill High, right? In those classrooms, as I recall, there's like one outlet per wall. So it's not like they have an abundance of power either.
Correct.
But it's not on the list. So what, what's the difference?
Twenty years or something.
Well, yeah, but an outlet's outlet and it doesn't wear out that.
Not the electricals.
It's, it's a capability that the manager, Twill, Twill High School on the back end is upside, so there's a lot of open power there. So I can have my guys go to Twill High School and run an outlet. We're talking upsizing the power coming into the building, running new wire, upsizing the panels. They're, they're tapped out, there's just no more power. That's the reason why, you know, they, they asked for more portals this year, like we've had to bring in services just for those portals on that side to manage that. And those are tapped out, like we're getting out, running out of power. We just don't have enough power to add anything. Where Twill High School, there's ability still to add and. Bring into the space for fairly inexpensive compared to Grantsville High, where we're talking about redoing the head end of the power and the service.
So uh an experience that happened to me this past wrestling season, I was at Grantsville High in the restroom and there was a visitor from Carbon High School. And she just said, this restroom is like a prison cell. So I just smiled.
A lighting?
So could, can I ask Lark a question about this? Um as we look at potential replacement schools, of course, that's gonna take debt financing, more leveraging to do that. What is our appetite to do more bonds so that we can actually do this? Cause I think this is. It, I, I mean, if we want to get rid of the red and not have to do it, meaning we're gonna replace them, we're gonna have to go into debt to do that, right? And I just wonder what our appetite to take on more, or is it, hey, we're, we're, we're maxed out. We can't do anything for a little while, at least two, three, four, five years, whatever. So we really don't even have the option of removing the red. Because we've got to continue just nursing those buildings along because we're leveraged too steeply to do anything about it. I'm not sure my question's like a lot of sense, but.
Can I rephrase that a little bit?
Yeah.
I need to eat appetite and maybe that's a community thing after.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But also, um, it is a really good question, but also Lark has the information and we've all had it in the past and maybe you haven't got it. Where he shows where, when each bond will drop off.
I've seen it.
Yeah, and so there's one that drops off in twenty twenty-eight, one that drops off in twenty thirty. So we can say, how many bonds do we let drop off before we try again?
Except that if you use the money for that, you're not using it for role use.
What do you mean, use the money for that?
If you're, the, the bond drops off.
Yeah.
And then we need.
We need five million.
We'll have our mini mini here.
That's right.
That's, that's forty million that you're not gonna build an elementary school with that we need an elementary school too. I'm just, I'm just.
No, I absolutely.
Cause you really need eight, I mean, you need the forty here and forty more for an elementary.
So that's what I'm saying, I mean, but for that twenty twenty-eight, we'd have to bond next year. And this is only my feeling, everyone can destroy it. Um that, that if we let one bond drop off and let the taxpayers' taxes go down a little bit. Then two years later, there's another bond dropping off and you do that one. That's just a buck.
My question was to Lark.
Next year doesn't feel like the taxpayers will like it.
Lark, would, would that be your response? Todd, just go and read the document, you'll see when these are dropping off and that's my response to you? Or would you have a different response?
Well, I'll just add, there, it all depends on how much we want to spend. That's the key thing is the total dollar figure, but. Um you have two options. Yes, bonding you can always look at when and timing for that. But we did issue fifty million dollars of MBA bonds to make sure we have some cash reserves. And my point is, that is sitting in the bank. Um when you get the financials here, you'll see that we do have a hundred million dollars in capital projects um sitting in the bank. Now, I'm not saying spend all that money, but that is definitely a place you could look without having to do it today. You could, yeah.
Build a whole school.
Could.
You could, it would just take all of it.
All of it. Well, we've already committed forty million of it to. Our current projects. I thought we already committed forty million to our current projects. I thought we did too.
What?
They didn't, we say that we are only, we're raising, we're doing the tax for the nine million capture because of the total of thirteen. Four million a year for ten years to, for the MBA bond to cover our current constructive project. So it'd be a hundred minus forty, right? Yes, no?
If you wanted to do.
Wait, how do we not do that? Don't we have to pay off that bond we already have?
You do. Um the point is, you have fifteen years to do that. So the question is, you're just gonna set it aside now, never spend it, so you can pay it over fifteen years and you can actually use it. That's the question.
And then when bonds drop off, we can use that money to pay them.
Wait, no, we're not getting money if the bond drops off. But bond dropping off means we don't get money.
That's right.
Oh, that's right.
And and I think at the end of the day, this, this kind of money, Todd, the answer to the question, it's not what the district can do. As far as adding expense, it's really what the taxpayers would do. And my sense is it's gonna take a couple of years before there's even a prayer. And and that, and I think it's probably three years.
At the end of the day, three years feels a lot more likely than next year, the exact year.
Cause you have to do it in November and it has to be in a.
But Lark, you made a good point that we've got money in fund balances and we've got some expenses here that equal up to. Besides the brand-new schools. Emily's been on our calculator all figured out, but say, can't we take? Five mi- I, five million out of that, say we backed out the forty million, so we've got sixty million in fund balances. And get these schools up to where they need to go.
And start on a preventative maintenance and say goodbye.
Like, what's the downside financially? We've always talked about, we needed a certain, because if we bond even in three years. We've gotta have a certain amount of money in our fund balances to make our credit score.
Our triple A rating.
Triple A rating, good. And we don't really know what that number is, right? Or is there an actual number in, is it?
What's it like? That one, the rating agencies actually look at funds and they exclude capital for that one. So what we're talking about here wouldn't really come into.
They don't look at the cup, the, that reserve fund at all?
Well, they, they look at your general funds where they spend most of their time focusing. Not that capital's not important, but they will exclude it in some of their ratios.
But what about the reserves? They look at that.
Well, no, it's not.
They exclude certain uh funds for reserves, specifically like capital and some others. When, when we're, when we actually get the report from them where it says we are lower than the average, they're using our general fund balance, not our capital.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So what would the downside? I feel like, you know, we, you, we've got a good amount of, I, I think sixty million is a good amount of capital reserves. And yes, if something major happens, the chiller goes out, we, I think that's what happens, we dip into that to get it. I know it's not sixty million, but can we take five?
Ten point five million dollars?
Can we take ten point five million dollars and fix these schools or half of it? What's the, I think that would, or some of it, and shows our taxpayers, we've saved this money, let's get our schools up to. Safety, yeah.
Priority one.
So priority one and two.
And I think that's the thing is, is, is knowing where, if there was a dollar amount associated with it, right? Cause it's kind of like right now, it's, my example, I guess, it just came to my mind is, just if you guys watched the lottery, it just happened, it was a massive amount of money. And in my mind, it's like, what am I gonna do with the lottery when I win it? I'm like, oh, I didn't buy a lottery ticket. So it's like, so it's, it's just a pipe dream of all the thing. Cause there's really nothing I could have done because I wasn't even in the game to start with. And so it's hard for us to know where we're at. When I don't necessarily know what we're capable of doing. And so I think that conversation is great and we can have that conversation to decide what is the number. Cause if it's a million dollars and then those priority ones, now all those priority ones get a priority level too, right?
Oh, I was gonna say, there's one A and there's one.
Right, and so you, you could go down there and say.
Clearly, you've got to be addressed. And and I don't think that, well, clearly, and it's not. One A is not granular enough to, sorry, one, priority one is not granular enough to.
Correct.
Because even ten million's not gonna cover all the priority.
Yeah, so then that would give you somewhere, okay, what are we gonna vet it out and we can have that conversation of what's going to be the, the biggest bang for the dollar we're gonna make to make sure our schools are where they need to be. It, it's just hard when, when we're sitting here looking at this, like, what I wanted to. It it's just hard when when we're sitting here looking at this, like, what I wanted to present tonight was just literally, this is everything. This is what I get to look at every day and working with our teams and trying to figure out, putting this puzzle together with what we have.
Because you had priority ones, it's nineteen million.
Well, so I'll tell you.
Not the high sc- that's elementary's five.
No, the elementary's is seven sixty eight and then it it depends, yeah, you keep in Stansberry.
It's fourteen million at the high school.
Okay, so say it's fourteen million, if we have sixty million in reserves.
That's high school. That's high school.
But if you take out Wendover and Twilla Junior. Because those are things that would be addressed by a bond because it's beyond us his whole life.
But some of those, we're we're in the West Elementary problem.
But you would have to add more to make it.
We're going to have to put some monies into Twilla Junior High if you're not, because like honestly, realistically, it's three years until you bond. And if you build it even progressively, it's two, four years after that.
So five years.
Best case scenario.
So why do we have to wait though, three years to bond?
That's my appetite.
There's not a prayer on this earth. I'll bet you lunch for a year that we won't, that we won't pass a bond in this year.
I don't bet.
I pray.
In, but we can't, we've already missed November, Elizabeth. So mid, earliest you can do it is twenty, November of twenty twenty six.
Right.
It's a public vote.
Well, let the public speak rather than the loud minority.
We did have a bond failed in twenty nineteen that was.
And we barely passed twenty twenty by the skin of our.
Barely by twenty twenty and people feel sometimes um. I don't have a good vocabulary for this. If they see us asking for money, they feel offended. That we would do that when we already know that they have to pay a lot.
I agree with that.
I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
And I think that we can show that we've got a fund balance and are putting some of that money into these schools.
Well, I think that helps.
I think that that helps because people would be like, well, you know, I mean, in five years or three years or whatever, they're going to say, well, I don't know what the next school is down the road that's falling apart or that needs, you know. Oh, it's overcrowding that might need an addition onto it. Well, I'm not going to give a bad, they won't, they won't even address this issue. And so what it, is that a a bad thing for us to take? I I don't know, this is what I'm asking. Is it bad if we took eleven million dollars, fixed the priority, what, fifteen million?
What what I would suggest is that we don't pick a number, but I think really that's where, that's where you do have to bend the in and say, okay. Priority ones, put one A through one C or or whatever that is. And really probably rank all priority ones from top to bottom, and then you draw a line and say, we can go to this point. And and we're comfortable doing twelve, because.
Yes.
Where the twelve line is, we're comfortable making eight or five.
Yes, but I just think like as a board, like if we've are, do we have an appetite to spend a chunk of money to bring these up?
I I think that, I think that's the way Scott's saying it, and I'm going to say it so I can understand, okay. I I think what we need to do is if if we, if we're all in agreement that we want to hear that possibility. Then what we need to do is allow staff to get together and come up with a recommendation of what would it take?
Yeah, and we, and like I said, I can pull those reports and we can go through there and give you line item by line item and and put it.
Well, well, there's. There's problems in nature.
I I I mean, I think, I think trying to, you know, first of all, before you can say, well, do we want to spend fourteen or sixteen or whatever out of fund balance? Let's have, let's have kind of a solid figure of this is what we ought to do.
The real.
The the dollar figure. I think we're all in agree, I I'm in agreement that I think it helps to invest some of that money into.
I thought we couldn't make decisions in favor of. We're not making a decision, we're not voting, we would be giving direction.
But but I, but I just feel like it's it's hard to talk about a dollar figure that you could take out of fund balance if you really don't have somewhat of a concrete number to talk about, right?
Yeah, no, I agree. And I think to add to that too, I think it it brings value to having that priority list, because I'll be honest, you guys, you could go tell me, hey, I'll give you twenty million, I can spend twenty million dollars pretty easily. And you guys might like, well, would we spend it on that? Why do we do that? Justifying that, right? I'd rather have a very tight where we come together and we have that discussion as as a team and say, okay, this is what we're we're comfortable with doing and that's where the mountain is. Because honestly, there there's, there's a lot out there and we talked about it earlier, is is you could, schools and and different communities know there's money out there, those priorities change from from person to person.
Well, from school to school.
And from school to school.
My camp goes here, there.
But the other side, the other side of it, sorry, is Lark, we need to know the number, right? I'm not sure I'm clear on what, how much money we have.
In fund balance.
In fund balance that we could put towards this. Is it sixty? Is it a hundred, whatever that number is? It would be nice to know exactly what that number is. Maybe you know it, maybe I'm just missing something.
Well, it's a hundred million.
Yeah.
It's a hundred million.
I I have the financials for last year, I just haven't provided it in particular yet, but you'll.
Minus the forty.
Well, that's just.
Because that's.
Well, we couldn't worry about that.
We've kind of agreed to that in the last, within two board meetings ago, the words.
We did, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah. So now it's.
I mean, sixty. Tell me if this is wrong. It looks to me that yes, technically you could spend that forty, but then you could get to the point where you're like, oh, no, we don't have the money to cover this bond.
I.
Forty's your line for that.
Sixty's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is like you just back out the forty and then there's sixty.
So but as you do that and recognizing, and your number was to take out those schools that are pretty old, even the ones, I appreciate that.
The red ones.
But what I'm suggesting is.
But you're right, there are.
Ian's going to have to put in, those schools are going to have to be sustained for five years.
The kids still have to be there for five years and you're right.
So and and but maybe on those schools in the red, as you do that. Their bar is higher before they get added to the budget, right? It it's going to be life safety stuff. It's not going to be parking lots.
Yeah, if you go to, you go to page twelve, like I I I just, you know, I feel like a little doomsday and I guess it's just kind of a positive though, if you like a page twelve on the facility report, like.
Well, it looks better.
Like, if you take that and you just kind of just throw the numbers on, look at the comparison, like, our school district really isn't a good place. Like, our our facilities for the majority, you know, are pretty good. It's just those couple ones that continue to come up in conversation. That have been around for a while and they they've served Twill County School District really well. They really have. They've been great schools, they're great communities, there's a great culture around them. It's just to get getting to that point of, okay, like, where are we at with this? Are we, are we wanting to rebuild or are we wanting to investing a lot of money into them to bring them up to a a better standard of of what it is? And 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 for me, um, talking to to other school districts and and other people in my position around the country, I just, I think it's, it's important that we're trying to provide an education. That's no matter what school you're going to, you're going to get that same quality of education, Twill County School District's providing that. And that's our point on twelve. Like, if you look at that, I really feel really good about the green. That's, that's really awesome. It's those couple that are trending up towards the top that are the biggest concern for me. And if you're asking my opinion, those are, those are the ones that are concerning and I just don't want those ones in the green to turn into those yellow or orange or red schools because we're not willing to invest a little bit now. And and going down that deferred maintenance route again, like, I don't know, we'll see what, where it goes. It's just going to get more expensive, more expensive, and then all of a sudden, we're having this conversation we're having tonight where there's large numbers now involved. And those large numbers are a lot harder to talk about or figure out how to solve than if we would have taken care of it early on and had a plan. And so I I just want to make sure you're looking at that, like, so you're not completely like, oh, my gosh, we're going to, I, our buildings, for the most part, we are in really good shape. They really are. There's. A lot more cosmetic problems than behind the scene problems that we're talking about. It's this couple that you you hear about. It's the Twilla Junior, it's the West, um, some of those ones that are coming up.
Sure.
And so I do feel good with where we're at. So thank you for allowing us to do a master plan and and the direction from superintendent to bring in professionals, because we drove, we were diving in a a in-house. Uh, there's a lot of things that if we would have done it in-house that we would have missed, to be honest with you. Just having those more resources and investing in that, we can see what's ahead of us now instead of guessing. And that makes me feel really good that we're in a position, I can see where we're at. So when you guys ask me like a priority list, I can actually go in there and provide that for you and and do it in a pretty quick. Uh, turnaround instead of, you know, oh, it's going to take me six months to go and dive into all these buildings and see whether we, we have that information now. And so. We're trending in a really good direction when it comes to capital planning. I've had conversations with Emily over the past, like, what does this look like, right? And I'm like, I don't know what it looks like. It was something new to us and we really haven't done a really great job over the years, but. Man, I I really see those, that that changing and changing into a really positive manner of of managing our buildings and making sure that we're providing awesome learning environments for our kids. And so I I I do think that's good. I think there's things we need to address, but I don't want to get caught up on like, oh, it's a doomsday either, because there's really a lot of good things happening as well. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
And I have a question about, um. I love everything that you've said right there, that there's good things happening in every school, no matter what. Um, when we look at making sure we can go to the taxpayers and say, we are being the most efficient we possibly can with it. Are there things in the priority two or maybe even in the priority three column, I'm thinking more to, that if it's not addressed, it will become more expensive down the road? So I'm thinking that if we're saying we're going to spend out of reserves because we have the reserves and we want to kind of push resets and do preventative maintenance, are there some things in category two? That would need to be addressed to say we have a true reset?
Yeah, I think there is. I think the way I would probably would look at it would probably be the other chart where it had the year to year.
Right, oh, right.
So because right now, like, there's those priority ones or priority, that's just looking at like today. That's taking a snapshot as of today. So looking at that, I I might look out, would rather look out of being like what's taken, there's three or four schools about the same age, so Willow, Middle Canyon, Overlake. Um, those elementary schools are all about the same timeframe. So that's awesome. They're they're on the newer end of thing, they're in the green, but guess what? All those schools are going to probably have the same problems at the same time.
They're going to be out.
Because they all have, they're all about the same ages of equipment. And so I would probably look out more in that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And and like that priority one, like, look out and say, okay, I know in five years that these might be a problem, but in five years they're going to be super expensive and go and evaluate that stuff. Before I would probably move to some of those priority fives. Because I know, I know as you look through this, if I pull the list, um. I I can, I can pull one right here. I have it in front of you. Like, you're going to see on there, uh, windows, exterior windows are are expensive, like West Elementary, that's one that drives up, it's a single pane windows on that building. Those things like that. Um, but like wall finishes, floor finishes and ceiling finishes, those are in here too. And so you look at those and those drive up a lot of costs, but most of those are sitting in, you know, those fours and five priorities. So that's your carpet, your paint, furniture potentially, new desk, new chairs. So I don't know if I'd want to look down those priorities and say, hey, those are, they might be more expensive, but they're not going to give us the bangers. Like, maybe in five years, we're going to have a chiller go out at one of our schools because its useful life is coming up. So I probably would go down that route instead of moving to the next priorities if we had so much money. I'd look for bigger ticket items that might not be a prior, like even on the priority list now. But in six years or five years or four years, they might be moving up on those priority lists of us to to start looking at replacing or repairing.
So this really isn't a question for you, but it's more a bulk thought from the board. And with the big asterisks and disqualifiers, so that anybody that's recording this or listening doesn't freak out, but. The the reality is that there's two schools that that are, the two elementary schools, West and Stansberry, that. We've talked about maybe are on the replacement list. And in the short term, if those schools were closed, you don't have to fix them. And if those schools are closed, it does, there there are some potential solutions. And and they're not super. I mean, one of them is larger class sizes, you have same, you know, just divide kids up more. Um, another solution is some portables at some other schools, you know, kind of really maxing out the playground with portables. But another one is that we, you know, you consider that year round school and and that those things happen. And in some ways, that also demonstrates need to to our community. Um, if if West is to a point that we say, gosh, it really does need to be, and it's to a point that we don't feel good about holding school in that building. Then, and we actually say, we're done and we farm those kids out and they realize we just did it, but I'm not talking about this year, so, you know, but. But when we do that, or Stansberry even, and we farm those kids out and we say those, those two schools. Don't meet our minimum standards. We're not, we're we're done with them, we're we're getting out of those two schools. Then it also demonstrates to their community that we do have a real need, right? We we've said these aren't good enough, they're they're not safe, whatever. And by the way, we're willing to have year round school for a couple of years so that we can get to that end. And you you've all heard me say that it wasn't when those three schools were built, the Middle Canyon era growth, and a lot of you weren't here then. But what drove the vote was year round school. I mean, those school, those, the Quilla was in year round school and that is, it it demonstrated an absolute need. And so it's another way to immediately solve some of these investments. If Ian knew that we were serious about closing school, those two schools, next school year. Those numbers turned to zero really quick. I mean, they're they're gone. And now we're going to have to spend some money on portables and some things. I I'm not naive, but.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing that thought out to the board that it's not always that we have to just throw money at it. Some other ways to look at it are, let's just really max out the facilities we have.
Yeah, and I think, uh, there's a part in the, in my report I provided too of of some options, right? Because we're always thinking about new, a new building, right? A different building. Um, not all of our buildings have the the site acreage or the capability of doing it, but we've looked at quite a few of our buildings and, you know, Clark Johnson, Stansberry High, Overlake. Um, Middle Canyon Copper, they have, they have the ability to expand, uh, add collaboration space, classroom space, which now you're just looking at a a wing of classrooms instead of a full.
Or lengthening those halls.
Or like, yeah, exactly.
It's a weak that side.
You're you're adding, you're adding some of those things on there. And so those are are more. I guess that pill's easy to swallow financially because they're they're not going to be the thirty million dollar elementary school, right? It's going to be several million dollars to add four or five classrooms.
As long as the cafeteria can handle.
Classroom, and 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 that puts some stress on there and maybe you go from two lunches to three lunches and stuff like that, it adds some impact. Um, that's why I do like, um, some of the things we looked at Grantsville High School and suggested last year is when we're talking portables, instead of doing these individual self-contained buildings. Uh, we went out and did an RFP that and brought a company on contract with this, uh, just to have them there, but they build, uh, self-sustainable buildings, right? So they could have, it's like extended classroom wing, and so you'd have a classroom wing out there where it'd have restrooms, you could do a teacher break room, and then you could do ten, twelve classrooms if you wanted to. So now it's a safer environment, it's a way better learning environment than our portables we've been doing. Uh, a lot of them are coming up on their useful life too. If you've been out and seen some of them, they've seen their better days for sure. Uh, so I think that, like, you know, you're you're looking probably around anywhere between one point three and two million dollars to add a site like that. But it's, it's a nice addition, it's a reloadable cable, that's safer for our students, you can lock it down.
So it's a more affordable option. It's not fixed, it's not, Twill and Junior High is extra weak.
Yeah, correct, yeah. And so and that brings the cost down, but you're getting a really good classroom setup, a really good learning environment.
With, and and it's not a single teacher in a portable by themselves.
By themselves, so you have restrooms, you have water, you could, you could, basically you could take that footprint and that company can design it for us. We can say we have X amount of feet by X amount of feet and we need. Six classrooms, a teacher workroom and a boys and girls restroom to handle two hundred students and they can design it out and then they'll build it and they can put it there. Um, you know, five, six years from now, we decide it's not needed at that school, it's easily picked up in pieces and we could relocate it.
It's kind of modular.
It is, yeah. But like I said, it's easier to lock down, it's safer for the kids because it's not an individual classrooms all separated from the buildings. And so you can create a little, basically a little extension to the building on its own.
And 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 what you described there could be that bridge if we said, we're we're going to close Stansberry Park Elementary. If if we really couldn't fit, I I, you know, that we're going to drop that bridge of a school or wing somewhere.
Throw a spring through it somewhere.
I, it's just, I'm trying to help us think out of the box, because sometimes it's really easy just to say, okay, well, we've got to spend this much, but there are other options. But it, the question is how much appetite do we have as a board? You know, are are we? I'm not saying I'm in favor of those options, I'm I'm brainstorming options, but.
They're just, they're options that are.
But but are we willing to say to the Stansberry community, you know what, we're we're done and we're done with Stansberry Park and by the way, in the West community, we just moved all the batteries, but now we're done down here. I mean, are we?
Well, I feel like financially, we, it would not, it would be talking about being a good steward over taxpayer dollars. It would be very, uh, I think we need to look at, cut that.
Conscious.
I would be curious, while we're on the topic, the student services really keeps standing out to me, like, I would be curious what other options would be, you know, how much staff we have in there.
So what, I'm on the other list.
Yeah, yeah, Heather could talk about it. I kind of, I kind of mentioned it in my report. Um, I think. Yeah, I think the number you're looking at in there is like making that a school.
Making what?
Making it a school. Does that make sense? So the those dollars amounts, not saying that Heather and her staff are not as important as kids, but kind of. Um, saying, saying that I wouldn't invest that kind of money into an office. I think now that it's a full blown office and it's and it's done that, and there's not classrooms there, and there's not preschool, there's not students in that building, I think that changes the. there's not students in that building, I think that changes the conversation completely based off of what you're seeing on here. We've done a lot of extra work on there, we're just kind of piecing it together, putting it together. But ultimately, I think that building shows something very different on here than what it is. Cause you're looking, they're looking at that when they looked at it at that time, we still had some classrooms, they're still doing some things in there. So as, as what it's operating as of today, I would not recommend investing a ton of money into there or changing a whole lot.
But it does need improvements.
And, yeah, and those are things that we could piece, we were piecing together and putting together slowly and, and adjusting. Um, Heather's done a great job up there helping out with that and making that. But when we were looking at that, it was more of like, what would this building look like if it was a school? Like, and wanted to have kids back here like when the preschool was there. So, yeah, I would not, I don't think, there's, yeah, yeah, they're just stuff that we're taking care of.
So what, I was just gonna try and sum this up and let, I mean, what is our timeline? So we've talked about this, like, do we say in December, in November, we would like some options? Do we need, are we looking at closing the schools? Do we need to amend the budget to give you? Are you gonna come and say, I think I can get these schools up to whatever with eight million dollars or fourteen million dollars? Does that, is it so far off in the year that we?
I just hate, I feel like you've put all this work into this report and I don't know, does it? It seems like you wanna like get going on some of it, and maybe that's just me, I wanna get going on it. Like, I wanna show to our taxpayers as well and our students that these schools, we, we value them in the buildings. And if, you know, Laura is saying that we've got some fund balances. Unless that stress is being allowed, I mean, I don't like to spend money either. We need to be, but the money's there for a reason. And so what's our timeline?
Well, can I throw one other variable just before you hit too far? There's one other big dollar amount that's not here. And that's the second part of this conversation, which is the safety and security stuff.
Right.
And that's mandated by the state legislature.
So at the end of this conversation, then we have one.
Because understand that, if I remember, it was twenty-four million stuck in my head.
Yeah, there's, there's some things on there, so you're, you're talking about window film, door locks. Bob, Bob can, yeah, I don't know.
So, and, and, I mean, I don't, what happens if we don't meet that legislative mandate? I mean, are they gonna come throw you in jail? I mean.
Wow, I think it's Bob.
Three hearts and a five, go ahead and say it.
We'll, we'll share us all together. Um, yeah, it's, it's a great question. So there's some.
But what does that plan look like? And there's some money there too, or, and maybe we just say, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna spend three million dollars a year every year to get that part, but just keep that, file that loop, nugget.
Yeah, and, and part, and part of that too, kind of going back historically, the, the, the bond that fell, I think we believe we had fifteen million dollars on there for safety and security that then was, that, that didn't pass. And then we pulled that off of there for the next time when it did pass. And so there, there was some money that was withdrawn from there to improve those before a lot of these house bills. So these house bills now are coming and kind of mandating a lot of things we already kind of knew before the new house bills come back. There is, there is time in there, but the funding on those are.
Time flies.
There, there, there's not a lot of money there and it's things that we definitely have to consider. And that's why I did put it in my report too of considerations, not something that we're overlooking. Because you're, you're right, they're, they're right there for us and we need to be investing in that. And so we've been, we did, been doing about a half a million dollars a year, um, in upgrading access control and doing some stuff like that, making our buildings better. But, yeah, there, there's some big stuff on there when you start talking window film and stuff that they're asking us to do.
So we still need, we have, we're half of the conversation. So I guess at the end of Bob's conversation, then we kind of talked about a timeline on when to come back, is that, okay, alrighty. The other thing I was just gonna add is, anyways, you could, but, well, maybe you couldn't. Another idea when we talked about year round schools, could you put sixth grade into the junior high? So, anyways, just another option.
I do, I do wanna say, and hopefully you feel the same way, I do appreciate this opportunity and having this conversation. Because I don't know if this conversation has always happened to this extent and having this kind of information in front of us. So hopefully you feel as, as good as I do about it, even though it kind of puts a pit in your stomach, like, oh man, that's, that's a lot there. But having that information now and having that data in front of me, that gives me the opportunity to start creating plans and creating things that we can actually put into place. Instead of just doing the deferred maintenance approach, I feel like it's been the, the status quo first, Twilla County School District, where it's just, if the lights turn on, then don't touch it, right? If, if it's turned on today, don't touch it and go tell it doesn't work anymore, then try to figure it out. And being that reactive to stuff and staying proactive has been hard. And it, and it's hard on our school communities too. And we know there's something that needs to be done and all of a sudden, the air conditioning doesn't turn on and then it's everybody's like, why is it ninety degrees in here? Where I would have been awesome if we could have been ahead of that and not causeless disruptions in, in learning. And with this information we have in our hands now and seeing that stuff, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident, my guys, they put a lot of time and effort in, in changing that reactive and starting to be more proactive and really starting to get out in front of stuff with the preventative maintenance and trying to take care of problems before they become major issues. And so, uh, hopefully you guys feel like that, and I just wanna say thank you for having the conversation and the opportunity to kind of put this in there. I probably didn't touch on everything that you wanted to do, there, there's a lot of information in the system. Uh, you know, close to a year worth of work of everybody looking into that and really diving in behind the scenes on our buildings and seeing what was going on with them and, uh, seeing where we, we need to invest in and coming up with a plan to do so, so. Is there anything else I can answer for you or anything that wasn't clear tonight?
Well, thanks for presenting.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Aren't budgets down for ninety minutes?
That's why I said.
Ninety.
I've been here a few times. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of building stuff. And so, like I said, just my last word is just don't go out thinking the sky is falling because we have really good people out there, um, in the operations department, bus drivers, cooks, maintenance, custodians, um, out there giving it their all every day and they're doing a really good job, uh, to take care of our staff and our kids. Uh, so I just wanna make sure I let you guys know that and you guys are noticing that. They, they are really doing everything they can to make Twilla County School District a great place. Uh, I appreciate them and at the end of the day, they're the ones that deserve all the thanks and all the credit. Uh, I just get to be the guy who has the title, I guess, sometimes it gets the opportunity to come and meet and talk with you. But ultimately, at the end of the day, it's those guys that are the ones who are just on the ground getting things done. So if you have an opportunity, please tell them, thank you, they deserve it.
Thank you. Also, thank you for getting the information that's exact enough that we can get down to making the decisions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, safety and security.
Do you guys need a break?
Oh, we're gonna sit back.
I, I don't plan on going ninety minutes.
The night, the night is dark. Nine minutes.
Nine, nine minutes?
No.
Challenge accepted, okay. Uh, I, I do wanna start off this presentation just, just real quick. I'd be remiss if I didn't kind of kick it off with our strategic plan area of focus this year. I know Dr. Ernst, um, you mentioned this two weeks ago in, in his report. Uh, but this C-Tag is gonna be our area of focus, um, threat assessment. Essentially, that's what it is, is, uh, multi-disciplinary team threat assessment at the school level. And I was honestly a little surprised that our committee decided to go this, with, with all the various projects we have. I'm definitely gonna break those if I, sorry. Um, but this just goes to show me that administrators need, need this. This is what they were most excited about when we brought this up in our committee. And, and we are getting threats every day in our schools. And it's on our admins to decide, are those threats real? Are they not real? What are we doing with them? What are we doing with those kids? Are we suspending them? Long-term suspension, short-term suspension? Um, this helps us answer all of those questions. Cause it gives us a decision tree, what to do when we get a threat. Is it a real threat? Is it not a real threat? If it is a real threat, what are we gonna do with it? And, and that's, that's the approach we're taking. Our administrators were all trained last summer, uh, in June. The majority of them were trained. Uh, I do have another training happening in October. Uh, that training will consist of social workers, school counselors, uh, SROs, and our school safety specialists. That will round out our multi-disciplinary team at each school. So it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of work, but I'm excited to have it and implement it. Any questions about C-Tag before I move on? Alright, just an update on HB eighty-four requirements. We, we kind of touched on this a few minutes ago. These were kind of, I mean, HB eighty-four had a lot of things to it, a lot of things. But these were kind of the big six. Uh, armed presence, wearable panic buttons, first aid in kids in every classroom, interior door locks on classroom doors, window security film that we just talked about, uh, and camera coverage on all school entrances. So let me, let me just kind of walk through where we are with all of this. Armed presence, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish this presentation about the armed guardian program, so we're gonna, we're gonna come back to that. Wearable panic buttons, this was the one thing that they were really, uh, just trying to shut down our throats from the state. Uh, that's probably a bad choice of words. But the good news is, uh, the state task, the school safety task force, they are taking this project on as far as the funding aspect. Now, that's the good news. The bad news is the state's taking this project on and funding this project. So there's, there's issues with that, right? We have no control, uh, over what the state decides that they're gonna implement as far as wearable panic buttons. I've seen things from, uh, wristbands to, to badges that people can, can hold on to. We're at their mercy, um, as far as what they're gonna roll out. Their timeline is this summer, uh, rolling this out. I don't know what it looks like, I don't know what it's gonna be. So we're just gonna cross our fingers and hope that the state knows what they're doing. First aid and bleat kits in every classroom, also something the state's taking on. So we don't have to worry about that, these are all twenty, thirty requirements, um, to have those in place. The thing that, that scares me most about the first aid and bleat kits i- is not getting them and implementing them, it's, it's the training component, right? Teaching our, teaching all of our, our teachers how to use a tourniquet, like a category two tourniquet. Uh, that's, that's gonna be, uh, that's gonna be a big lift, we're gonna get there. Interior door locks, the interior door locks, that's, that is something that, um, the state prioritized in this last grant. Some of you may know, I, I asked for somewhere around seven or eight million dollars in grant funding. Uh, I got a half million bucks, we'll take it. Uh, the majority of that money was for interior door locks. Um, that's, that's where all of that money's going. We're, I spoke with Ian earlier, uh, sometime this year, uh, we're gonna start working on, on getting a contract in place to start, uh, getting those interior door locks in all of our classroom doors. So that is on the radar. Half a million dollars is not gonna cover it all, uh, I think you said that might cover half, half, but it's a start.
The wording there is most of this cost will be covered, but it's more like half?
Probably half, yeah. Thanks for pointing that out, yes. Originally, I did, I did think it was gonna be most because when, when we did a bid, we did a bid, um, about a couple of years ago, and I think that bid said it was gonna be about five hundred thousand dollars. And that's where, that's where we, we ended up, was about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in grant funding.
What, what, what is that? What's an interior door lock? I mean, I guess the reason I ask that is I've already, I'm assuming that the classroom door is already locked, so what?
It's a push, it's a push button lock from the inside. So that all a teacher would have to do is be able to press a button on the inside of their classroom to lock their door. Most of our classroom doorknobs, door handles don't have that capability. So teachers would either have to lock their door and keep their door locked at all times to have their door locked. So when they shut it, it's closed.
Cause our, our locks are from the exterior.
Right. Or, or in a lockdown situation, if they don't have it locked, they actually have to go out into the corridor, expose themselves in a dangerous situation, fumble with a key and lock that door. That's why they're, that's why they're pushing for this interior push button lock.
Okay, that just helped me understand, thank you.
Uh, window security film, this is, this has been interesting. The state couldn't even tell us what level of film they wanted to use. They passed this bill, they said, hold off, don't do anything yet, because we're not sure even what that level is. They finally came up with that level this last July, this is a twenty thirty-five requirement. I haven't even looked at it. We did measure, uh, all of our windows, uh, this last, well, last year, when we did an assessment of each school last year. Uh, it's gonna take a couple of million dollars to, to cover all of. It, it, it is essentially all of our, our ground level windows. So all first floor, ground level exterior windows, they have to have this film. So, yeah, again, we have ten years to get it done.
I just wanna say, I like how you put that you're hoping for grant funds in the future. I've actually been in some various meetings and tours with legislators and, um, the ones that I was with aren't too excited about this particular requirement. And so it may not remain this way. I mean, it might, but, I mean, we just do what they say, but if they're saying till twenty thirty-five.
Let's be closer to the thirty-five.
And, and a lot of people have a misconception of, of what this security film will do, right? Um, a lot of people think, oh, this is ballistic resistant glass. There's no such thing. I don't care what you put on a piece of glass, it's not gonna stop a bullet, okay? The, what this does, what this security film does is it holds the glass in place, okay? It, it, it basically keeps the glass from shattering and it keeps somebody from entering through that, that, that window or that door or whatever it is. Uh, it, let me rephrase that, it doesn't keep them from entering, it delays them from entering, that's all it does. So, yeah, camera coverage on all school entrances, this has also been kind of a fun one. Most of our school entrances are covered. Uh, the problem is, is by definition, right? I'm thinking about Toola High School, we have all of those ground level doors on every classroom. Are those technically an entrance? By the state standards, yes, they are. Are we gonna cover those with cameras? I don't know, I don't know. That's a, probably a bigger discussion with Dustin, but we are getting there. We got twenty thousand dollars in grant funding to help with this this last year. Uh, but twenty grand in cameras, that goes really, really fast, really fast. Any questions about HB eighty-four requirements before I move on? Wow, Ian, you wore them out. Alright, visitor management, um, this is my big project right now. Um, as you'll see over here, I've kind of got it set up for you. I'm not gonna demonstrate it in the interest of time tonight. I am gonna stick around after we adjourn and if you guys wanna see it, great, I'll show it to you and, and show you how it works. Uh, essentially what it does is it, it prints people a badge, um, when they come in and sign in as a visitor. It also runs their name against all sex offender registries in all the United States. Pretty cool. Um, so if they clear it, they scan their, their ID and prints them out this cute little badge that they wear. The whole system takes about twenty seconds for people to get through. There's an easy way to check in and there's an easier way to check in. Both ways are easy. Uh, one way is just scan their ID. Scans their ID, checks their name against the sex offender registry, prints them out a badge, takes about twenty seconds. The easier way and the way that we're gonna really, really push out to, um, the community, if you're a, a frequent person that visits schools, there's an app that you can download where you scan your ID into the app. One-time scan, and you can just take that app QR code, scan it, prints you out a badge, less than five seconds, you're in. So, pretty cool. Uh, again, if you wanna see it, um, I'll stick around afterwards and show it to you.
What's the name of that app?
It's just the Raptor Visitor Management App.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep. Again, I'm gonna, I'm, I have a very overzealous goal of having this in place by the end of October in all schools. We'll see if I get there, it's gonna be close. Any questions about visitor management?
Are there some schools using it now?
Yeah, uh, we've been piloting, piloting it at Blue Peak for the last couple of weeks. Um, just working out the bugs, figuring it all out. We've actually had a couple of sex offender alerts come through. So, uh, the hard part has been really what do we do with those alerts, when we get them, right? So the hard part has been really what do we do with those alerts, when we get them, right?
Is it kinda a security containment, or what?
The law, the law is pretty clear about sex offenders, registered sex offenders. They cannot be in a protected area, which does include a school, however, they can to fulfill a parental duty. So we're letting our administrators have that discretion of what is a parental duty, right?
And so will that be school by school administrator, not consistently across the district?
It's, it's school by school, but I, I think that it's gonna be pretty consistent. It's not that we're gonna give these people like just full access to the schools if they, if they pop up. You know, if they, if they really need to be there for their kid, then yes, we're gonna let them in. Any questions about this?
Yeah, I have one more question. So if you do the app with the QR code, does it stay up to date though? Cause what if you like have your QR codes and then you, a volunteer does something illegal, would that then go into the system?
I don't know. I'd have to ask the Raptor folks. I, I'm sure that they have some sort of, like, like I know, for example, BCI does a background check on every person with a concealed firearm permit every night. My guess is Raptor has something that does something similar.
Bob, will you find out so we can report back?
Sure.
And I have one more question on that app thing. So like if I'm a parent volunteer, and I, that's why I was wondering what the name of the app was, because it's very confusing when we, we say, "Go on to App Garden," but it's not an app. That's the name of the thing, the volunteer something or other. So I don't have an app called App Garden, I have an app called?
It's gonna be called the Raptor Visi, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a multitude of flyers at every school with a QR code that's gonna take you right to where the app is.
But does App Garden talk to the Raptor management system?
So, so you're talking about two, two very different things. So App Garden, App Garden is something that I believe they're worth phasing out, right?
Oh.
So, so Raptor's taking over the volunteer portion of this.
Oh, that's a good one.
This is, this is primarily visitor management, not volunteer management, for right now. But we're, but we're going to incorporate it into the volunteer portion.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, no, but it's okay. Cause so to me, like when I go? Or that's a visitor.
Or to check your child out.
Yes. I was gonna say, that's, that's the question.
Somebody's coming in for an I E K meeting. Somebody?
Oh, that's a visitor.
That's a visitor.
I get that.
The vending machine guy comes in to, to take care of the vending at Blue Peak.
Yes, okay, sorry. I'm just thinking from a parent perspective, that you just have party, but that's different. Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
But question, so if you are there to check your student out, you don't necessarily have to do that, cause you're not going?
We're really just, anybody that's going beyond that front.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Yep.
So I thought the same thing you thought.
You, you can use it, it'll, it'll lock it.
Well, that's what I was told yesterday, yeah.
What were you told yesterday?
Just that if you wanted to check your child out, maybe you had to scan your driver's license, but?
Oh, told you that?
I mean, I don't wanna, well, yeah, fine. I mean, that's what they thought.
You have three schools to choose from.
Yeah, Blue Peak's the only one that's, that's got this up and going right now, so. Yeah, maybe Blue Peak did. I don't think so.
We're all learning.
Oh, okay. All right, armed guardian program. I wanna, before I get really into this, I wanna outline my objective with, with this presentation tonight. Last year, I was standing here, and I told you guys, "We have to have armed presence in every school." And I said, "We can't afford any other option but this." So we're gonna be doing this option, and I, and I feel like, and maybe, maybe I misread the room, but I feel like a lot of people walked out of here a little on edge about it. My objective tonight is to put your minds at ease about this program. So, there you, so that's, that's where we're going. Okay. We're currently comprising volunteer employees who work the varying roles in the district. They have to have a fit to carry assessment, we're gonna talk about that. We currently have about thirty-two volunteers as volunteer guardians at various stages of the training process, of the implementation process. Right now, we have like seven full-blown armed guardians. We have many that have cleared fit to carry assessment that need to start training. I've got eleven more people doing fit to carry assessments tomorrow. So it's going, we're rolling with it. Then we'll talk about the challenges here in a minute. As you can see, we have teachers, custodial staff, secretarial staff, administrators, parents, nutrition staff, a plethora of people involved in this program.
And do those thirty-two, will they cover all of our schools, or we have like five in one school, nine in this school?
As of today, everybody's covered except for one.
Every school is covered.
Yeah. Provided, now, I, I say that with a little caveat. Provided they, they pass their fit to carry assessment. Again, I've got eleven people that need to complete fit to carry assessment, which is a great segue into my next life. So this fit to carry assessment, it's the same, same assessment that police officers have to do, the exact same assessment. It's a mental health screener, it's also a personality screener, and then they have a one-on-one interview with a psychologist. When I spoke with you guys last year, we were looking at an in-house person to do this for us. We've moved away from that. This person is a third-party psychologist. He's the same guy that does the Tula County Sheriff's Office fit to carries, the same guy that does Tula City Police Department fit to carries. And he's very, very limited in his scope of who he wants to allow into this program and who he doesn't. We've already seen, well, I mean, we have about a twenty percent not recommend rate from him. So we're, we're seeing a lot of people not clear this. We're gonna talk about that, talk about that. Let him go through, eighty percent recommendation rate. Any, any questions about the fit to carries? Does that make you feel a little bit better?
Well, I think the thing that was concerning us last year was the, how much it would cost per assessment.
Two hundred and fifty bucks. That's what we're paying. The hard part is, we still have to pay that even for the people that are not recommended. So I, so I have to then find somebody else to replace that, so really it becomes five hundred dollars. Like, I have one school right now who I had somebody not recommended. We found somebody else, we put them through a fit to carry, they were not recommended. So tomorrow, I have two people from that school doing fit to carries, and I'm hoping that one of them clears, so.
So now it's seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, yeah. Any? Any questions about the fit to carry? Okay. Training, this is, this is the fun part. Everybody's gotta go through training. This is a lengthy process. The first day is a classroom training that they put on, is a full day. They talk about anything ranging from deadly force laws to basically how to, how to conceal carry in a school, proper safe handling of a firearm. There's, there's a number of things that they go over. And then, once they complete their, their classroom training, they get two full days on the range, all day. It's, it's a lot of shooting, a lot, a lot of shooting. They're gonna shoot a lot, a lot of rounds. They have to qualify their handgun, the same standards that police officers do. Same standards. So there's that. Trying to think what else about the range days I need to discuss. If they don't show proper handling of their firearm on that range, it, the safety rules, everything else, they kick them out. And we've had that already happen this year. We had one individual that just couldn't keep his finger off the trigger, kept waving his, his muzzle around a little too, too liberally, and we kicked him out of the program. The last day is an active assailant scenario training. This is a four-hour training where they actually literally go into a room and get into a firefight with an active shooter. They actually have to go in and, and show proficiency with their handgun that they can take down somebody, take down a shooter. It's a lot of fun, but it's intense.
So it's intense?
Yeah.
This is very... I don't wanna sound callous, I'm just curious.
Sure.
So when these people are doing this, will that be a day when there's no school, or are we filling in their jobs?
Oh, when they're doing all the trainings?
Yes.
Yes, so, so, yes, they're gonna, it'll be, somebody will need to fill in. We are getting subs for these individuals. The only exception will be the active assailant training, that's gonna take place after hours. That's the four hours after hours. So, a lot of, a lot of these people don't need subs, right? If you're janitorial staff, nutrition worker.
Okay.
So if you're, if you're somebody that does need a sub though, then yes, we are getting them subs.
And the range training, so if they don't qualify after two full days, are they out of the program, or do they keep training?
No, they're done. So far, we, we, again, we've only kicked out one for, for improper handling, but everybody else so far has, has been able to qualify at those standards with their firearm, so.
If they volunteered because they are in that?
You know, it, it's funny, it's funny you say that. That's not the case, actually. We are, we are seeing a lot of brand-new shooters in this program. We had a, man, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say this openly. We, we had a, we had a guy. We, we had, no, but seriously, we, we had a guy who, who cited he wanted to do this. Last June, he went and bought him a brand-new Glock nineteen, never shot it before a day in his life. And he went in, he went and shot like fifty rounds before he came to the training. Comes to the training, he shoots a two forty-six out of two fifty. Which I, which kinda drove me nuts, cause I was the top shooter at that point. And, and I was like, "How can this be?" And, and the sheriff's office folks, they, they said, "You know, that happens a lot, because people come in and they don't have bad habits. We teach them the right way from the get-go." So, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you made me feel better. Sorry, sweating. Are you starting?
No, 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 the, no, no, I, no, it's, it's good. Okay, armed guardian challenges? I, I sort of feel silly throwing this up there after Ian got up here and said that we basically need a gazillion dollars to get our, our schools up and running. But my challenge is getting people, getting volunteers for this program. Some schools, I've, I've had a plethora of volunteers, but others, I've had to really pull teeth and beg and have a big sales pitch to do it. The reality is, is once they go through all of this, the fit to carry assessment, this crazy training that they're doing, we're gonna give them a one-time five hundred dollar stipend that the state is issuing, one time. What we're asking these people to do is, it's crazy, it's crazy. I'm just, I don't have a better word for it. It's, it's crazy what we're asking them to do for one-time five hundred dollars. We've gotta, I've gotta find a way to incentivize this program financially to, to keep and retain people into this program. So that's, that's my struggle.
But you're paying for all the ammo for their training?
What's that?
We're paying for all the ammo for their training.
Yep, we sure are.
Full two days, we're just?
So if they only do it one year, we're back to square one, getting the two hundred and fifty dollars fees, that's all their?
Yes.
And how much of your time were you devoting to this project?
A lot.
By halftime, a lot?
No, not quite that much.
We're gonna start to talk about unsung mandates.
Yeah.
It's not the five hundred, the state's like, "Oh, we give you five hundred bucks, we make you cover." It's, it's a quarter of your time, right, that we have added a quarter of the E just to manage it. It's the ammunition, it's the substitutes, it's the, next year, doing the same thing.
Yep.
So there's, I mean, it's so much more, but the legislature just doesn't see.
Yep. So, any questions about the armed guardian program? Really? Wow.
Bob, I know you probably don't know this right now, just cause we're so new. Do you have a guess as to what those ongoing costs for the incentives, ammunition evaluations may be?
Ongoing, I, I think, I think we can scale back on the ammo quite a bit, because I, I think the, and I, I invited the sheriff's office here to help answer some of these questions, but they, they couldn't make it tonight. But we're gonna be doing a lot of scenario training in the simulator at Blue Peak to, to re-qualify a lot of these people. They're not gonna need to do the full two days on the range that we do on their initial training. So that's, we're gonna be able to scale that back. Fit to carry assessments, it depends on how many people drop out, how many people need to come back in. Ultimately, I would like to have two or three guardians per school, because we're supposed to have somebody there every day, right? If that person's on sick, on vacation, just not there, having that extra coverage would be nice. So I think we can scale back the fit to carries next year and the ammo costs next year. We budgeted twenty thousand dollars this year to do fit to carries and ammo, and I'm already pretty close to having that tapped out.
How often do they have to re-qualify?
Every year.
Every year?
Yep.
But if you're gonna double it, the reality is, we're probably gonna spend that twenty thousand every year, because next year, if you try to get? And it'll be interesting to see the retention rate.
Right.
Well, not without the incentive or added incentive.
Right, right. So I'm just, but I'm just thinking realistically, and honestly, as we report the cost, we should be counting a quarter of it.
And you start throwing all that in, and suddenly, you know, it's a forty thousand dollar incentive mandate, conservatively.
Conservatively, that's no statement, and I've talked to other districts that have had to give financial incentives in order to even find them, and they're getting two per school with financialism.
What are they paying?
Uh, that's a confession, they don't have a payment.
Granite and Alpine are paying like three thousand dollars in stipends.
Equivalent of a coach.
It's, it's a lot of money that, it would be great if we could come up with that, but I just know that that's?
And two per school.
Yeah.
So they're paying six thousand dollars a school, plus all the other things we talked about.
But if we think about, if we think about the, the savings, the alternative is?
The security guard.
You'd have to pay for contract security, which I've done the groundwork on that, is probably minimum seventy-five thousand dollars a year for a contract security guard in every school.
Well, per school.
Per school, per school.
But you know, if I'm a, you know, I like to pack a gun, and, and if I want, you know, our demographic might be a little different than some of the other locations, meaning, you know, we're out here, we're a little bit of the Wild West, at least that's what Salt Lake thinks. And so my point is that, you know, you give me five hundred dollars and you give me a license to shoot someone who's in my school causing potential damage?
And you give me training.
And give me training, I'm likely going to jump at that opportunity, because that's kinda my mindset anyway.
And we, and we do have a, a pretty good demographic that, that fits that profile. And to your point, Scott, is that's, that's the one thing that I've heard from a lot of people, is "This is worth it to me just to have the training."
You brought that picture.
But, but, but I wanna, but I would, but I would be cautious with that, with that attitude of, this is Tula County, we're in the Wild West. That's not the case, because one of the schools that I really struggled getting somebody in was in Grantsville, of all places. I thought, "I'm not gonna have a problem at all getting somebody in Grantsville." That's, that hasn't been the case. So, yeah, it just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stereotype us as the Wild West.
Well, your results will tell us what the actual truth is.
That's Salt Lake's perspective. I know we, we're still a little better than that, but?
Yeah, and then I, yeah, I was, I was surprised, so. Any, any final thoughts? This is all I had for my presentation tonight. Any other thoughts or questions from each? Did I, did I fulfill my objective in putting some minds at ease?
Yes, yes, well done.
Sort of. Melissa's not there yet.
Well, I just, it's not because of the presentation. You did a really good job, and it explained a lot that I? You did a really good job, and it explained a lot that I didn't know about. But it is, I mean, it's like, that was one of the things that other school districts came and talked to us about on Thursday, or when I went, our meeting was, with our region's school board meetings was, what are you doing about armed guardians? We're paying and we still can't get people. So it's just, it's a, it's a stressful thing across school districts, and we want our kids to be safe. This has been, especially in light of what happened a few weeks ago. It's, it's, it's a thing that we can't just pretend that, I don't know what the best solution is. Anyway, so I appreciate, this helps, and I'm so grateful, like, I know we don't know who these people are, so grateful for those that have volunteered. Could not be more grateful, so... And so, do you have one at every school now?
Everywhere except for Dougway. Dougway's the outlier, and I'm having those conversations with the, with the base commander and the Dougway Police Department, so how we're gonna...
I feel safe with Dougway.
How, how we're gonna cover that requirement at Dougway. They, they basically want us to put in an SRO at the same cost that we're putting in all of the other SROs in the county, so...
Armed military guards.
Yeah. So it's, they, but they, they're adamant, they will not let us have a civilian on the base.
Do they have military police out there?
Yeah.
I'd say you can't even get on the base because of the military police. They, they're not counting that? I thought that that would count.
No, they're not counting what?
Like, their military... The armed guards that won't even let you onto the base?
The state, the state still requires that every public school to have armed presence.
Can Doug, can we...
And Dougway is a...
That's super adoption for Dougway?
Have they been to Dougway?
Have they been to Dougway? I don't know, maybe.
I'm wondering if we could ask for a...
Have they been to a military base?
I, I asked for an alternative from the state to not have a guardian at Dougway, and they denied me. They, they denied it.
Do they understand?
You asked me that.
They understand.
Yeah.
What they asked is, maybe SuperDiddy can escalate that through the state. I, I just...
Or maybe we need to talk to our leg, I mean...
And, and again, I have somebody at every school providing these next eleven passer fit to carries.
How about we have the protection of the United States military?
Beyond my experience.
Yeah, so, we talked earlier about, we have Ian's building and facilities assessment, and then you also have the, the security needs that are written elsewhere. We don't need to get into that, I know it's all the assessment, but when we talk about the timeline or when we wanna figure out how much money we're taking out of reserves, so will you... Is this what we want to happen? That these two get together and decide what are priority ones for security to match up with what are...
Well, I would, I would say as far as HB eighty-four, we, we start with the requirements that are due by twenty thirty. And, and those are primarily the interior door locks, right? The, the window film, that's not, that's not until twenty thirty-five. So, if, if we're prioritizing money, let's, let's take care of the things that, that they require soonest.
Right. So all the other things on, there are many things on the list that are on that.
There are many things on the list.
So you're saying none of that's priority one?
I, I guess I needed to go in back and see what all the priority one things are.
Okay.
But, but, but in this year, your door locks from the state's perspective is, is priority one.
Right. And on the list already or not on the list of what we can work with?
It's on the list.
It's on. So, so that's all, so I think this is something that then... You guys, superintendent decides, and then, as far as when it goes on the agenda, you'll bring it to...
Yeah, so let me see if I could sum up and maybe what, what I, notes I've taken. So, first thing is, we wanna know, as we prepare to spend money, or when we do spend money, we wanna know what, what we spent, what could we have spent? So, you know, why we spent money on this compared to that? Why did we make the choice? And then, how much money does that save us now and also in the future, looking forward? We also wanna look at our priority one items, and I think somewhere there's gonna be a natural line. We'll have to dig in and see, but my guess is there'll be a natural line of where things...
The high ones, the low ones.
The low ones, yeah. Also with that, though, we wanna look at our priority two items that we're worried about becoming priority one items. For instance, we don't wanna not do a priority two item, and then a year later, it becomes a priority one item. So, so we'll, we'll include in that some priority two items, as well as big-ticket items that we see potentially moving up the list quicker than other items. So then we take all of that together, we put all of, we put all of that, we, we draw that magic dotted line up. Here's what our recommendations are, and it equals X millions of dollars. We bring that to you all, and you all say, yep, that line looks good, or let's move it up a couple, or let's move it down, or swap these out. Is that kind of...
Yeah. And how much money do we actually have? Did we decide?
We did.
We have sixty million?
Yeah, yep.
Yes.
So is that done? Sixty million? We're never gonna have to question that again?
Well, and I...
Well, it depends on we tap into it.
If we tap into it. One thing I wanna clarify to the public about the school, they're gonna say, what? You have sixty million dollars and you just raised our taxes? Let's talk about, or let's just remind everyone that a good way, and I'm gonna break this down, 'cause I know, I personally am not the Gussa, maybe I should be broadcasting this to all of whoever's listening. A good way to run a budget is to have a savings account that, what do they say? Like, good for like six months out or something?
Three to six months.
And, you know, and I, I was gonna say, when something big happens, we have to have some money in the account. So, we're not hoarding all of this money. Sixty million to all of us that run a household is a lot of money. But when our budget is as much as it is, and we have as many fifteen thousand students to take care of and our employees to take care of, I just want to stress that, and if board members have a better way to describe it, we are not hoarding money, but sometimes in your household, when you're like, your house is falling apart, you're like, you know what, we've gotta dip into that savings to like, do this. We do want to, we do need to use it. There are some priority ones that need to be used. So I don't want people to get all, you know, mad that we've got all this money in a checking account that we're not using, and that we could've used it. When we raise taxes, that money is for ongoing funds. And a lot of people that have been following this with the My Tech High situation can now understand the difference between one-time monies and ongoing money. So when we raise taxes to keep teacher salaries going, we can't dip, I mean, we can dip into reserves...
Capital, capital reserves.
But, but, capital reserves, but, say it is just reserves, that reserve money will run out really fast, 'cause we need that money, ongoing money. So, I just hope that if people are really watching and listening and understanding, and if you don't understand, please call us, please email us, please ask us the question, so we can under, so everyone can understand and not get upset that there's sixty million dollars sitting in a bank account we're not willing to fix an air conditioner, so...
So, when would you like us to have this to you?
What's reasonable?
When is it possible?
What's reasonable, I agree with you.
I think reasonable, probably at the earliest November, because we're almost to October already. I think it'd probably be best to do a work session again.
I don't think we have one.
Is there not one in November? I can't remember when we have a work session.
We don't have a work session in November, or just Saturday. It might not be till February.
Not till February?
And you know what, that's okay, that's in chief.
Uh, we can do it in a, we can do it in a regular board meeting, one earlier than that.
And one other question, as you're looking at the dollar amount to spend, we've also thrown out the situation with West and Stansberry, and if that would be a suggestion to save money, and I'm not saying we're gonna close it this year, but what if it is? There's laws that have to be abided till then.
A lot, a lot, that's, that's quite a lengthy process.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, you hear it on the news, multiple districts are canyons, and they are both going through it right now. So they, you have to start super early. I will also say with that, if you look at our student services building, if we're gonna build a new elementary school, it may be beneficial to say, could we wrap student services into an existing bill? We may be able to, rather than building a standalone building, you may be able to do a small wing that would house those in a couple rooms and save money compared to a whole new building.
Kind of like the concept that we talked about a number of years ago with teaching and learning and, and, you know, building our kind of...
Model elementary school.
Model elementary school.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, as a matter of fact, if, if we do go down this road, that is still something that, yeah, something that I would like to explore, because there are some, some really good things that can happen by doing an elementary school, a smaller elementary school, that serves our whole district as far as for a model elementary.
With a lab school.
A lab school.
The lab. I'm actually, I'm very excited.
So, we will, we'll get started on this...
Maybe even where leadership, you say, look, we cannot get this done until December, official work, do we mean? So during this, like, say, in February, we'll be working it out.
So we'll tend to, so we shoot for December, January timeframe, and then if we need to bump it up to December, we're good. If we need to back to February, we will as well, is that sound? But then, I have this on the agenda already for our executive meeting tomorrow, so it'll be a topic of discussion.
I think there's decent power. Let's not, let's let it be solid and not try and turn it up.
Although, one thing I don't wanna do is to get to the work session if it's February and say, oh, well, kind of, we're rehashing and starting over, and now you need to come back and back and back. And so that by summer, we're not ready for the projects.
Yeah, I agree.
That if it's gonna be February, that's fine.
The reason why, yeah, and I agree with that, because there has to be a certain point where, if we're gonna start getting some of these things done, summertime is a great, great way. So we need to get on the schedules of other people, and even that might be too late for some of them. But, yeah, it, the sooner we decide, the quicker we can get on schedules for our different maintenance crews and contractors, and we'll be helping us with...
But, and I guess, to me, I'm just thinking, how many times will we need to discuss it before we say that we're at a point?
Yeah, yeah, that's where I like January a little bit better. And, and maybe it's a preliminary, well, we can't make decisions in August. We'll figure that out.
But it might be. If, if there's solid communication written, we have it in our hands, you know, a week or two, a week or two, but my thought is, we have it in our hands before a board meeting. And, and it's a couple weeks before the board meeting, then we can pick up the phone and have one-off conversations with, you know? And, and then when we get to board meeting, it could be, it, it doesn't need to be a...
Highly effective conversation.
Yeah. Forty-five minute conversation, it can be, as long as we've done our homework. And as long as we get it with appropriate lead time, not just the weekend priors.
Anything else? Any motion?
Motion, we adjourn, in a second.
Bob's like, heard by Scott, so by Bob, thank you very much.
And I'm gonna stick around if anybody wants to see the other visitor management.